Seventeenth, 2023. Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Supervisor McGordy.
Here.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Here.
Supervisor Hashack.
Here.
Supervisor Jirdy.
Here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Here.
Okay, Counselor Scott, would you pledge allegiance for us?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, just as.
Okay, now we're going to move into public expression, and I want to remind the public that we want to hear from you on items that are relevant to the business of this board. With that in mind, you're welcome to comment on items of interest, and members of the public shall line up at the podium six feet apart. Members of the public joining via Zoom shall use the raise hand feature by clicking the raise hand button on the bottom portion of the screen or by pressing nine if they are calling in to the Zoom meeting via telephone. If you are a general member of the public, you are limited to three minutes. If you are part of Mendocino County government, you can take more time. Please announce your name for the record.
Good morning, Scott Ward, Rutter Valley. Thank you for having me. Purpose of my being at the podium today is to discuss parking and the lack thereof along planning and buildings, public parking lot. Every day, there's at least a half a dozen employee vehicles parked there along the road in front of planning and building. When I worked here for the county from 1988 to the year 2000, the CEO mandated that all county employees park behind Juvenile Hall, and we would walk over. So, as I am nearing and have achieved being agent at Infirm, I would appreciate if you'd have your employees parked somewhere else rather than close proximity to their workspace. Make them walk and let us have a better parking space. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember those days. Next.
Good morning, Board. My name is David Ister. I'm the district attorney. There is a false narrative being circulated by some who pursue an agenda of misinformation and by others who circulate this false narrative without having enough information to know better. In the short time I'll be at this podium, I intend to provide a little background information that will be hopeful, hopefully encourage law-abiding citizens, one, to not be influenced by the misinformation, two, to not engage in non-factual speculation, and, three, to let the local courts do their job and resolve their matters. Criminal charges were filed Friday against a current county employee and a former county employee. Like all of us, these two defendants are presumed to be innocent until the contrary is proven in a court of law. The in-court legal process to do this begins this afternoon at 1:30. The single charge filed against each defendant flows from a criminal investigation that was not initiated by me or anyone else in the DA's office. No, this investigation was initiated and conducted by the professionals at the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. As is the case in most criminal investigations, the sheriff's involvement began when information regarding the commission of possible crimes was received by his office from knowledgeable sources outside of the local criminal justice system. Believing there was probable cause to proceed, the sheriff assigned an experienced investigator to review timelines, gather and analyze documents, and interview recipient witnesses. At the conclusion of the sheriff's investigation, written investigation reports were prepared along with a charging recommendation naming the current and former employees as the suspects. The sheriff's completed investigation packet was then submitted to the DA's office for review and for consideration of formal charges. After going through an initial DA office intake review, some additional investigation was conducted by experienced DA investigators, both current and now retired, to supplement some aspects of the sheriff's investigation. The law enforcement investigation and DA review process I just mentioned is the process followed in all 58 counties for interactions between law enforcement and DA offices. Locally, between 5,000 and 7,000 crime reports are submitted by law enforcement to the DA's office every calendar year. Among other duties, and given my many years of experience in doing so, I personally review reports and make charge decisions seven days a week on most of these law enforcement reports so that there is a consistency in how we charge cases. Now, to be very clear, neither my staff nor I have used or will use our positions to pursue retribution or purported vendettas against any defendant, public sector or otherwise, here in Mendocino County. Again, the case involving the two county employees is a sheriff's office investigation that now needs to be resolved in local courts pursuant to state law. Finally, while some don't like it, my staff and I will now publicly discuss facts and/or legal theories of this case or any other case for that matter, outside of court unless and until there is a conviction. If someone looking in from the outside tells you or writes that they have divined what is going on and why, don't believe it. Our silence is an ethical, fair, and honest way to protect constitutional rights and to not inadvertently taint our limited pool of potential jurors. Those who have actually paid attention over time know this is how my attorneys and I have successfully pursued justice in Mendocino County since I became the district attorney in January of 2011. This is how my prosecutors and I will continue to pursue justice in the Mendocino County courts. Thank you. I need to go downtown. I have further work to do.
Thank you, sir. We have a question before you leave.
My question is not for the DA. My question is for the executive office and Counsel Scott. As far, thank you, DA Ister, for coming to the meeting today. As far as the board is concerned, do we have next steps or actions that we need to take at this point?
Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel. If the board would like to discuss this recent development, which has arisen since the posting of the agenda, you can add an item today to the agenda for that discussion. I believe we'd be prepared to assist with that. The board would have to make various findings to show the urgency that required it to be added to the agenda, and I can provide that language to you if you'd like to do that today.
Supervisor Mulhern, I would second your motion if it's coming.
I do think that the public and our employees deserve to have some further conversation from the board about next steps or actions that we might need to take. So, I would like to see an agenda item. Come back later today.
We can do that. I would ask the board to make some findings right now. I think we could make those findings. We can reiterate those later today when we're prepared with the agenda summary. I would ask that the board find there is an immediate need to take action and that this need arose after the posting of the agenda on Thursday of last week, which I believe you have some facts there that would support that.
So moved.
Second.
I think that, I don't know if the CEO had a comment.
If I may, I would just request that be put at the end of the day to allow us time to prepare.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Yes.
Supervisor Hashack.
Yes.
Supervisor Jirdy.
Yes.
Supervisor Williams.
Yes.
And Supervisor McGordy.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, General Services Agency Director. I just really wanted to touch base quickly about some upcoming construction work that will be impacting access and exit from the county's administration center. The city of Ukiah, as we're all aware, has several construction projects going on throughout the city. Upcoming, their current purple pipe, which is recycled water piping throughout the area, will be coming along Bush Street, along the county's administration center, and then heading along Low Gap Road to State Street. The construction work is intended to begin next week, early next week, Monday through Friday, starting at 7:00 a.m. For those of us and employees that enter or exit the administration center, you will have limited ability to that from the Bush Street side. And then also impacts as far as timing to either get to the administration center or exiting it, you may want to have that in your travel plans. There is some comment about potential for the low gap to State Street being one-way traffic at some point. The timelines for this, again, beginning next week, probably for the next few months, and just wanted to make sure there was awareness. There's a website for the city of Ukiah. I did give the clerk of the board this recent public notice. It's www.ukiahrecycledwater.com. Thank you.
Oh, question. So, will we be having traffic going through our parking lot?
As we hope to, that citizens traveling through here would understand that they shouldn't be using this as a thoroughfare. That being said, the Bush Street side, which is, one is an entrance and the other is used typically as an exit, is mainly by employees entering and exiting. So, I would not anticipate that the traffic will increase. However, there will be impact, and it could be backing up particularly during the morning time when schools, you know, beginning to be in session and as well as in the afternoon when school is letting out.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mark Donigan, self-healing practitioner and educator, ordained minister, AKA Goldilocks. Gratitude and appreciation. Pumpkin Fest, Mary Ann Davidson, works for the city of Ukiah Parks and Rec. One of the first people I came to when I decided to be alive and get a business license and be part of the public here, and brought me eventually here to the board of supervisors to speak and give that gratitude and appreciation. Thank you, Mary Ann, for everything that you did. And I give that gratitude from Katrina Kessin. She's my person. And Mary Ann, again, I came to her first, and I tend to go to Katrina more now. And these people make our town special. And it's going to move me right on to being one. From the day I came up here, I asked us to all be one. I couldn't be more ashamed to be standing here right now in front of you all, being part of this process. You've agendized the item now, so I'm not going to speak to it directly. I wasn't going to speak to it directly anyways. As was already said, the courts will work it out in a very long time, not to anybody's satisfaction. Nobody ever wins in court. And again, I'm very ashamed to be part of this process. I did everything I could do to make this not happen, and it still happened. And I think that you all are so inside your little bubble that you can't see how obvious it is from the outside. There's some things that are just dead-on obvious, that are all of us on the outside. Some people could say corruption. I never, even when I'm looking at dead-on numbers, want to say somebody did something wrong or bad. Again, we're all one. We make mistakes. That's what courts are for, if that's what needs to happen. And again, no prejudgments on anybody's pleas. And I think that's already been done, and that's why I'm ashamed. So, I'm really sorry I had to come up here and be this hard. But we're in a hard place, and it was, we came to it because nobody listened. And we have these closed sessions. We're having one today. The public doesn't know what goes on in there. They make all their assumptions, and they're always bad. And guess what? They're right. We should have more information. What goes on behind those closed doors shouldn't happen. Sometimes the laws are wrong. That's why you don't win in court. A judge decides what the evidence is, just like you all did.
Is there any other public expression in the room?
Good morning, Carrie Shattuck. I'm curious why there's no discussion and possible action about our budget on this agenda. I think it should be on every agenda going forward from now. Supervisor Williams mentioned at the last meeting that, you know, we are in a crisis, and we need to be addressing this and not just waiting until the, you know, budget hearings come around. So, please, someone put it on the budget, I mean, on the agenda, excuse me. Thank you.
Any other public expression in the room? How about on Zoom? Is there any public expression? All right, with that, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is...
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm just clarifying the off-agenda item will be an open session.
Okay. So, Item Three L has been withdrawn at the request of the department, and Item 5A has been added to the consent calendar, so if that's okay with everyone?
Move approval of consent calendar, including Item 5A.
Before that... Hold on just a sec. Clerk, have you established proper notice for...
Proper notice has been established.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to move approval, but I guess the pins don't really mean much.
Supervisor Hashack, I apologize. I couldn't quite see your pin from here.
Okay.
And I didn't either, so I need to remember to scan the table. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda calendar, so let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Yes.
Supervisor Jirdy.
Yes.
Supervisor Williams.
Yes.
Chair McGordy.
Yes.
And Supervisor Hashack.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now we'll move on to Agenda Item Four, regular calendar. I'm supposed to announce that Items 4B and 4D have been withdrawn at the request of the department. Supervisor Mulhern.
Thank you through the chair. I actually would like to discuss Item 4D. I uploaded to eComment previous presentations that the board has had about the Ukiah Recovery Center, including a plan for expansion that we had on August of 2022. I've also included in that just the basic Measure B, the last report that includes the funding that they had. This project has gone through substantial county review at this point, including Measure B, creating an ad hoc in order to approve an RFP, which was also a very lengthy process. I sit on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. I attend the reentry coalition meetings and several other meetings related to behavioral health, including substance use disorder. And I believe that when the voters voted for Measure B, their expectation was that the county was going to roll out the intended projects for capital. And we've done an incredible job so far with the training facility and the residential treatment facility, and the Puff is well underway, as we know. I think that the substance use was the last piece. And, you know, currently, we are experiencing long wait times for people to get into residential treatment, and I can tell you just from, you know, every single study and anecdotal report that I've heard and read, you know, when somebody's ready for treatment, they're ready for treatment. And I think it's the public's expectation that we move this project forward at this point. So, that's where I'm at.
Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, so I'm going to agree. I think we did a proper RFP, and we have one responsive project proposed, and I actually support it, and I think we should fund it. When I first saw the agenda item, I thought it was a little bit vague. It didn't have a dollar amount. We don't have detail on, what I understand may be a request from the sheriff coming in regards to the jail. I would like to take those together to make sure that we're not leaving a gap that can't be filled by other means. So, I would recommend an ad hoc to work on bringing back a shovel-ready proposal in coordination with the sheriff to make sure he gets what he needs for the jail.
So, we have kind of two ideas on the table. One of them is to bring the item up anyway and discuss it, and was that a motion that you made?
It looks like Counsel Scott has it.
If the board wants to handle a motion and discuss it and have staff, you know, bring in staff, though the item was pulled, the board can vote to do so.
Okay. Is that the pleasure of the board? Shall we have a discussion? An emotion, perhaps? Supervisor Hashack.
Well, I appreciate the need for a sense of urgency for this, but when I looked at the agenda item before it got pulled, there were certainly gaps in the information being provided to us, and we didn't have a budget. We didn't see anything about how money was to be spent or how it fit into the Measure B overall budget. And then we're hearing about the need for the jail and an item that might be coming to Measure B to fund some of that. So, without all of that knowledge, you know, information about how the budgets are going to work, I think that maybe we do need an ad hoc to really bring it forward as a kind of shovel-ready proposal, because we don't have that right now. And I'd be willing to work on that ad hoc.
Okay, so Supervisor Jirdy.
Yeah, I would support an ad hoc as well.
Supervisor Williams.
Well, two of the key elements that we're missing from the agenda summary were how much are we allocating and what will we get for it? And so, it surprised me when I saw that. But I think independent of those concerns, which I would expect the ad hoc to resolve and bring back, as John said, shovel-ready, I really think we need to see what the needs are at the jail. There is a mental health component to this new wing. We know we're in a very, we're in a difficult time. We don't have general fund available. We want to make sure we don't allocate so much that we can't fulfill our obligation at the jail. And so, I would like that to come back at the same time.
The other thing that I don't see on here is kind of an accounting of funds that are in Measure B at the moment, so that's also missing, which is critical. So, let me ask Counselor Scott, at this point, can... What was that from? Counselor Scott, so do we have the ability to make, should we continue this discussion on the item, would you suggest, or can we appoint an ad hoc right here and end it? Or what should we do?
And direct staff to bring it back. I believe you could also create an ad hoc as part of that, you know, collateral at the same, you know, to have those discussions continue through the ad hoc as well.
So, I'm kind of feeling like I'd like to have some of this out in the public today, especially since the sheriff has ideas as well, and I think it might be useful for us to hear the item.
The agenda item states that the successful proposal was for $4.1 million. The board has had a presentation on the project. So, the process for moving the RFP forward at this point, not a lot was revealed because of that RFP process. But hearing the conversation with the board today, I do think it would be important for members of the public, including the people from Ukiah Recovery Center, which do have a more urgent need for this project to move forward in conjunction with other plans on their property, which the board has known about for over a year, to have the conversation move forward at this point. And if that means appointing an ad hoc to work through contracting with this project, you know, if we're going to ask staff to present all of the accounting, then the $9.3 million grant that we got for the Puff should be included, the opioid settlement money should be included. There are funds coming the way of the county as we deal with the expansion of the jail. I just think that that process will take several years, and this project does have an urgent timeline, though not for the county. So, if this board does not want to consider moving this specific project forward at this point, then that really needs to be a clear statement, direction.
Chair.
Yes.
I think the way Supervisor Mulhern has presented that is not accurate. It's not an either-or. You fund it at the requested amount, or you don't fund it at all. The staff report, the staff memo, I should say, that we have here shows a requested amount equalling almost $2,000 a square foot for construction. Perhaps there's a reason for that, that the cost of construction is so high, but nearly $2,000 a square foot is a very high cost of construction. And so, you know, we do have needs, and punting, we also know we have needs for the jail. We do not have the money. We don't have the general fund dollars to fully fund the jail. And if any aspect of the jail project is eligible to receive Measure B funds, which probably it is, because the new wing is entirely for either realignment people who previously were going to state prison, or therefore, people with serious behavioral health issues. Those people with serious behavioral health issues are to go into the new wing, not the old wing of the jail. So, I think, you know, for us to fund an outside group before we understand how we might be able to fund an in-county project that is in need of funds would be a mistake. And, you know, this isn't the city of Ukiah that has excess amounts of money. You know, we have 200, the county of Mendocino has general fund, all state, federal dollars combined, has 210% the revenue of the city of Ukiah. I know Supervisor Mulhern is very familiar with the city of Ukiah's budget, but I want to remind everybody, we have 210% the revenues that they have, but we have 350% the number of county employees versus their number of city employees. The ratio is way off the charts with the county, and we own far more buildings, far more county roads than the city of Ukiah has, and we don't have the revenues to maintain what we have. So, before we start giving away county dollars, scarce county dollars, to non-county buildings, we need to be sure that we have the ability to fix the buildings and fund the buildings that are in the county inventory. I'm all in favor of disposing of dozens, you know, perhaps dozens of county properties. I'm probably ahead of most of the board members on that. But I think we need to see this project in context with the other before we allocate this, and I think putting the board in a position to rubber stamp this request that comes in without knowing the context of the jail project would be a financial folly by the board.
I'm feeling like there's sufficient interest in this to continue the discussion when they not pulled the item from the agenda. Supervisor Williams?
Well, I think we've already done that, but the only additional comment I have is if we do fund an outside facility, it needs to be available to all county residents. You know, I think the public is paying for this. Everyone is paying for this funding source through sales tax. With the Puff, some are learning that their families may not be eligible because they're not Medicaid. So, whatever we do with substance abuse treatment, we need to make sure it's available to all 90,000 county residents, not just a subset. And I would like that direction to be given to staff from the start so it gets worked into all of the contracts.
CEO Antal.
Chair, if I may, I spoke with Director Miller this morning, and the reason we pulled this item last week is because staff is not prepared to answer the questions that you're discussing here today. So, you can leave it on, but I'm giving you a heads up, staff is not prepared to answer those questions.
Well, since we seem to be sort of dealing with this item at the moment, I will, it appears that Jackie Williams would like to address us. Jackie, please.
McGordy, members of the board, CEO Antal. I'm Jackie Williams. I'm the executive director of Ford Street. I think I've tried to follow your process, and your process has shifted. And so, I want to point out some things and then ask that we review them. In the request for proposal, you didn't require a statement of work, and I submitted questions about that. And it was explained to me that should this project be considered, we would go into a contract negotiation. So, as CEO Antal just pointed out, there's information that I was not obligate, I didn't neglect to put it in there. I asked specific questions and got nonspecific answers. So, this is a shovel-ready project, and I could tell you in three days where we are and what it would cost. So, the process, as I understood it, was if the Oversight Committee made a recommendation back to you... back to you, that you would then decide yea or nay before we go forward with this contract process. We've spent over a year and enormous amounts of time. If there really isn't an interest or a commitment, because we're an outside agency, you owe me that clarity. You need to say you're interested or you're not, because I can't hold up my state funding now. And with all respect to you, Dan, this is unimproved property. So it's not just the cost for the square footage. We're having to put in water, sewer, all sorts of other improvements before the building is done. So I'm kind of at a loss now, in that I thought that you were committed to spending some portion of this money for SUD. I believe, since we became a drug-medical provider, the Ukiah Recovery Center, if not the largest, is one of the largest SUD recovery centers and providers of this addiction treatment in Mendocino County. But if that's a, if that's a, don't want to invest in another nonprofit, that's your call, but you should at least be clear about it. I also want to remind you, for the last year, all we've heard is can't afford maintaining our property, you know, trouble with paying staff appropriately. If you look at what agencies like ours do, we are literally the delivery arm of many programs that are funded through the state, through the county. You need to figure out what your position is in working with nonprofits like us, because I think you've demonstrated for yourselves that you can't afford to be vertically integrated and provide everything to everybody. But I'm questioning now why we went through this process for a year, and every hurdle that was thrown in front of us, I feel like we've jumped through. And so where we are with our other issues are, I have asked the state to hold us up a bit on our commitment to building the Treatment Pavilion. So if we were given the opportunity to attain some Measure B funding, we could complete this as one project. That would save time and money, significant amount of time and money. I'm of the impression today that, although I thought we had support from several of you, that maybe that's not true. And so, again, I think you owe us some clarity here, because what you're talking about, what we've been told at the Oversight Committees and what we've been directed to do, it's inconsistent, is the nicest way I can say. And so if, in the request for proposal, we were also told there would be an opportunity for us to come and present our project, and we should be prepared for that. And that never happened either. Most of the things that I have asked for and been given direction for have not happened, have not happened in the timeframe, or not happened at all. And when I query, I'm cautioned by county council that I can't ask questions, because then other people that may be interested in these funds, well, it will be the perception that we somehow have the inside track. So you've kind of got us in a box here. And I, for the sake of not jeopardizing the money with the state, I'm going to have to make the tough decision on whether we just cut this, cut our losses and move forward with the Treatment Pavilion and just see if over time this plays out. But I do, you have a recommendation from that committee that you approved, and their recommendation was approval. I understand that Darcy and Janine pulled that approval vote, but again, I'm feeling like, how do we get out of this? I appreciate your comments, Mo. The other thing you should understand, since the time that I first appeared before you, we've been working with the city of Ukiah planning and building, and we have had to change significant things in our original plan. And so the cost estimates that we used at the beginning, which we remember, was probably a year and a half ago, you know, when we get right down to being able to demonstrate what they are, I'm sure they will be different, I'm sure there will be less. But again, I haven't been given the opportunity to provide you a statement of work or a cost estimate, because I'm waiting for the call that Assemblymember Wood had asked for your support for. If we can run this as one project, we can do it faster and cheaper. County council seems to have, takes exception to that, but has not explained why, and I've been asked not to ask. So that's where we are, and I'm hoping you can help us find our way through this.
So realize this is using government funds, this project, both state and potentially county dollars, so public tax dollars, therefore prevailing wage kicks in. So I'm going to throw that as a caveat, which should add about 30% to the construction costs. But the cost we're looking at per square foot is six times the cost per square foot of homes that I'm aware of that were built in Fort Bragg in the last couple of years. So it's not, it's not a 30% increase, it's a 600% increase of homes that I'm aware of that were built in Fort Bragg in the last couple of years. So that's, why would I vote to contribute money towards a project that's seeking 600% increase over what I know can be built here in Mendocino County?
Why would you vote without giving me the opportunity to provide you a statement of work and a breakdown of what those costs are? You are flying blind with incomplete information, and you're jeopardizing a program that is adding immediate value to this community in an urgent way, because it's so needed. So again...
How do I know that the existing funding isn't sufficient? It's all, what you're requesting puts it at 600 times the actual cost of construction.
Point of order of process.
Excuse me, Chair, when you're ready. Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council. A couple of things. One, I just want to note that we should formally open public comment. I believe we have taken public comment, at least some comment now. Second, I think, just to provide some context, there is a, the item that was on today was for discussion about moving forward on the RFP. That is a separate process, that process takes some time, even when there is an award. There are other, there are other factors involved when we're talking about capital housing developments, where when we're using public funds, we need to ensure that those funds have restrictions on the property deed restrictions that would protect the use of those funds, ensure that the funds are used. And typically, you have seen this in the context of other capital housing developments that the county has done through behavioral health and social services, where those funds need to be tied and the purpose in the deed restriction, so that the property can't be used for any other purpose for a certain period of years, typically for the life of the property. That, all that, all that process takes time, and so that while there may be needs that a private entity may have, that a timing that they have, we do, as a public agency, as the county, we do have to make sure that those steps are taken and to protect the public funds. So that does add to the process.
Supervisor Williams?
71% of our general fund comes from property tax, which effectively is capped at 2% per year. The amount of federal printing of money since COVID has caused runaway inflation. Everybody's feeling it, right? Everybody in this county goes to the grocery store and sees those costs. County government is now seeing that increase in everything we do. Our revenue is not rising to keep up with it. And so while we thought we were done with overruns, we may be looking at another $7 million plus. And if we don't, this jail is our obligation. If we don't complete the project, I'm confident the courts will make us complete it. And, you know, I brought up Chapter 9 before, we can't balance our budget come June 1st. We're off by millions. Even with all of the good work that the Executive Office, Golden Gate Initiative, are doing to find efficiency gains, we couldn't pass a balanced budget today. So number one for me is to find out what the jail needs to be compliant, fund that first, because that's our number one priority. The state constitution tells us, public safety is number one for funding. And then after we're done with that, we can look at what's left. And I think this is a good project. I believe this county does need more substance abuse treatment, and I wish it could have been started a year ago. But the reality is, we have to pass a balanced budget, and we can't do it today. And it's really on us to get those numbers on the table.
Supervisor Hauscheck.
Well, thank you, Chairman Gordy. You know, substance abuse is a critical issue in Mendocino County. We've seen the statistics, they're horrific, and I applaud what Ford Street is doing, you know, and no fault of their own, I think Ford Street has done what's needed for this RFP. But there were some issues, you know, the county council had to hold up the RFP at times and deal with some issues that arose. And so, you know, but when I saw this agenda item, I thought it was very lacking in those, the information that we need as far as a budget. It didn't have the budget for the project, it didn't have the, how it fit into the Measure B budget, it didn't have these other issues that we have to deal with, such as the jail and that mental health wing. And so, no, I think that best path forward would be to have an ad hoc, look at all these issues, have the staff bring back the information, and have it brought back at the next meeting.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Thank you. I guess that was going to be my next suggestion as well, is that if we're appointing an ad hoc and they're working with the department, that all of the information that's needed is brought back at the October 31st meeting. I do think that at this point, we've been going through this process for over a year. And so I do think that we need to either move this project forward or not, frankly.
Yeah, I'm kind of disappointed at the way behavioral health and county council have seemed to, appeared to have had a hard time communicating what they needed from the onset. I kind of feel like we've drugged this thing out, and we're finally getting to the point where we probably should have been in the beginning, which is to actually have some real information about, A, what are things going to cost, B, what are competing needs in county budget, C, whether there's a will of the board to do this. So I think an ad hoc would be really useful. I do want to hear from Counselor Scott, if she has some commentary, and then Supervisor Jordy.
So the item, yes, Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council, thank you, Chair. The item for today was to bring forward the RFP, and I believe the RFP, the committee that evaluated and determined a winning proposal is going forward with contract negotiations. So I anticipate that the next step, as with all RFPs that the county handles, is that it would, after the contract's negotiated, it will be coming back to the board. So I believe that is what the department is planning to do. I just believe they weren't ready with that today.
Okay, well, what they submitted wasn't ready, and I, you know, that's disappointing just from a lack of professionalism to have a completed agenda item for us to consider that ends up with us having discussion like this, and because I think it's unnecessary. Supervisor Jordy.
Well, there are at least two supervisors, maybe more, who also want to know to what extent can any of these Measure B funds be used to close the gap on the new wing of the jail? And so I would request that if an ad hoc is created, that that be a part of the staff discussion and presentation that's brought to the ad hoc and brought to the full board, because I think voting on this proposal in isolation of the board, knowing how we're going to close the gap on a new wing of the jail that we will have to build and that we don't have the money for, would be, as I said before, fiscal folly by the board.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you on that, and I think that that should be part of the charge of an ad hoc. So I have discussed this a little bit with Supervisor Mulhern, and I'm wondering if Supervisor Williams and Mulhern would be willing to serve on the ad hoc.
I would, but I want to see if Supervisor Jordy is also wishing to serve. I'd be happy to step back.
No, thank you, Sharon.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay. And I thank Supervisor Hauscheck for also volunteering. Yes?
This is Atlas Pearson, Senior Deputy Clerk of the Board. Can I get a clear restatement of the proposed scope of the ad hoc?
Hang on one second. Supervisor Hauscheck, were you wanting to be on the ad hoc?
Well, I have been attending all the Measure B meetings for many years, and I understand their budget pretty well, so I thought that would be useful, but I'm certainly willing to...
I would, I would support you as well, so I don't want to step on any toes here. If you're already involved, you're welcome to it.
Okay, you feel comfortable understanding the budget then? Supervisor Hauscheck? Okay. So at this point, we are, we're recommending the creation of an ad hoc to look at the contract with Ford Street, to see what the actual cost of the project is. We also want to know what our balances are in our Measure B funding that are available. We want to know also how we're going to pay for, or what portion of these funds may be used out of Measure B for finishing our new jail wing. And it's all to be done in two weeks, and come back with a report to the next board meeting for a decision. Did I get that right? And Supervisor Mulhern and Supervisor Hauscheck will serve on the ad hoc.
If I may, were there something about volumes or residence that you wanted as well?
Yes, Chair, my request is that whatever services we create need to be available to all county residents, because this is being paid for by all county residents. So, you know, I think a lot of, a lot of members of the public would object if they find they're paying a sales tax, and they and their families would not be eligible for the service, as we've seen with the PUF.
And I agree with that concept, too, that we want to be able to, when someone's in crisis in our county, to have local treatment whenever possible, if we're expending county tax money on it. But I think also for county council, is there a, there's a question on Measure B and funding the jail, too, that needs to be resolved, perhaps?
Thank you, Chair. Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council, we, I heard that direction loud and clear, and I believe we're already working on such an opinion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we good?
Chair, so that we don't have to go through this uncomfortable process again, can we give direction that this item come back when it's 100% complete, including the budget numbers for the jail? I don't want to have it come back partial again.
So CEO Antal, can you guarantee that that will be the case?
Can certainly try, but the fact that we only have two weeks, considering a few other things we have to tackle in the next few weeks, we will absolutely do our best.
So Chair, given, if something has to shift here, I would rather it be the date it comes back, rather than the completeness. It doesn't make sense to take it up sooner and not be, and have staff in a position where we can't get answers to basic questions. So I know we would like it on the 31st, and we'd complete, but if it can't be complete that date, I would rather it be moved to the following meeting and be complete. Is that fair?
It's fair. I'm just really concerned, because this process is just dragging on and on and on and on, and I'm really hoping that this is a priority, because having a discussion like this is somewhat unprecedented, we typically don't do it.
Chair, if I may, the ad hoc would be able to report out on the 31st if the full item wasn't prepared. So the ad hoc could report out during the 31st on the status and where we're at with the item.
Supervisor Hauscheck.
One of the things with the, like we're seeing with the jail, is that it's an ongoing expense that keeps increasing and increasing, and the more we go on, you know, we're going to find out new numbers all the time. And so, you know, I kind of look for bringing this back in two weeks, knowing that, you know, the numbers we come back with are still going to be tentative at best, right? But we'll do the best we can to get the most current numbers, but we're never going to have a final number until the whole thing is finished in years. So I think we should bring it back in two weeks.
Okay, point well taken. So two weeks, we'll hear from the ad hoc and hopefully have a complete report, and if it's not, we will be advised of what's missing and what it'll take to finish it. So with that, I think we can close this item and move on to the rest of the agenda, unless there's any final board member comments. Okay, thank you.
Chair, I apologize. Just to make sure there is no further public comment on the item, I don't know if we raised that for the public.
Any public comment on an item that really isn't technically being considered, but I, we... we have Sheriff Kendall in the room, I, we would, if he's prepared just to say anything on this, and kind of help us understand what he's looking at from his perspective and what he's hoping for.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Gordy, Sheriff Matt Kendall. Currently, I wasn't prepared to speak to this this morning, but I've been working on a lot of different things, you know, we've got some, what are going to be, most likely some overruns on the construction of the jail. Now, the behavioral health wing of the jail is actually going to be serving roughly 25% and we have roughly 25% of the residents inside of our custody setting right now who are experiencing mental health issues and receiving medications for it. I don't think that this is one of those projects where one person has to lose for another to win, but I think that we better walk into it with our eyes wide open, because we have some real concerns about, you know, county funding and various other things at this point in time, but this is a project that we have got to get across the finish line. And I think that over the last couple of decades, well, CDC changed to CDCR, I believe roughly 20 years ago, where they have rehabilitation, and we're behind the times on that. Moving forward, some of the things that will be put into place in the new behavioral health wing of the jail will be visitation for family members who had not been able to visit because of jail construction, with people who were experiencing some serious mental health issues because of safety concerns. Various things where folks would come to do the visitations and people would not, I'm not going to talk to them, I'm not going to leave, you know, things like that can be fixed. We also have day rooms and treatment rooms where people can meet with providers, can meet with psychiatrists, you know, there's all of these things where it's bringing us into the modern times, meeting the modern expectations. And I think that we're going to have to look long and hard at how we spend our funds right now, because we are not in a position to be able to spend anything extra. But there are things that are being demanded of us today that were not demands 20 years ago. The bar has changed, and we have to change to meet it.
Okay, well, thank you, and we're balancing that with the fact that we have some of the highest rates of fentanyl death in California, not an envious position for us to be in, so we have to think of all of this as we move forward.
Absolutely, and then we're also looking at legislation changing, because, you know, Prop 47, Prop 57, Prop 64, they opened the door for some real problems, and these were, these were laws that were put into place by well-intended people, and they were. However, the unforeseen consequences of them are what we are dealing with in modern California today. And if these laws do change, then it's going to put a greater burden on the sheriff, on county staff, and it's also going to put a greater burden on our partners in the community. And so it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck approach, because, you know, it will go back to the model of, the judge will be telling people, you will seek treatment or you will face incarceration. And, you know, it's just a, right now, they're attempting to change this, because we are having so many deaths, because, and addictions are a huge problem in Mendocino County. When I sit down on the weekends and I go through the jail bookings and whatnot, I sat down and did a, basically a two-week time study where I could, I could draw a straight line from a person who was booked to the addiction that they have. And so that's 60% of what walked in the door in a two-week time period. Those addictions are what is getting us, the crime that comes with them. I can draw a straight line from the crime committed to the addiction that these folks have. Now granted, I have the, I have enough background here with a lot of these folks who have been serving time in the jail, a lot of them I grew up with, a lot of them I've known them for the past 20 years. And so I know what their issues are, because I know these people. And addictions are absolutely just beyond belief, but that's one of the things that we're going to be treating in the new wing of the jail, as well as the behavioral health issues that come with these addictions. And so, you know, it is going to be all hands on deck, we're going to need all of our partners, but we're going to have to work really hard to figure out how we spend funding to get ourselves there at a time where we just don't have it.
Chair, question. When the jail project was first proposed by the county to the state, at the time, the estimated project cost was 25 million, or 26, 25 from the state, 1 million from the county.
Yes.
Then, after the project was submitted, as inflation kicked in, we made economies to the project to make it less expensive to build, but yet the estimated price was then 27 million, 2 million from the county, the same 25 million from the state. In most, the most recent figure I had heard was that it was 7 million needed by the county with the same 25 million need provided by the state. All efforts by the county, by yourself, by the supervisors individually with our legislative reps, and by the executive office have, at least so far, not yielded any money, additional money from the state. So to date, we're still looking at no more than 25 million, even though there have been some delays in the project due to the state approvals, even though we've had unprecedented inflation that nobody could have anticipated, because nobody anticipated COVID happening, nobody anticipated the federal stimulus that would occur during that and the inflation that's occurred. And, and yet, the state at this point, still so far, is not willing to give any additional dollars to this project. And for clarification, the latest information that you're hearing on the project, are they now expecting more than $7 million needed on top of the 25 million from the state?
I believe so, but I don't have my numbers in front of me, and I don't have them memorized. But, you know, one of the issues that I have, and I do have this issue with the state, is that they have, you know, they basically gave us a, this is the percentage we'll take care of, this is a percentage that you will take care of. Well, when our percentage changed, theirs did not, and that's, that's an issue for me. Further, with the expectations of services and whatnot to be provided inside of a custody setting, the bar has moved. This is becoming an unfunded mandate by the state, and whether we like it or not, we are going to have to meet those needs. I just wish that they would come to the table and say, we're going to help you, and we're going to come up with the same percentage so that you can come up with the same percentage. If it was 98% on them and 2% on us, let's, let's continue to make it 98% on them and 2% on us. Now granted, as the number goes up, that 2% is higher, but at that point in time, we aren't picking up, you know, 25% of it, and that is a concern for me. However, we also have to look back, that we have a jail that was constructed in 1985 when I was 16 years old, and it was constructed to fill a gap for just a few years. And, you know, every one of us in our seats, unless we're willing to make the changes, then we have to own the mistakes of those who came before us, and that's just the way that this job works. If there were mistakes that were made before, before we were here, we've got to own those mistakes unless we're willing to make changes. And sometimes those changes don't come easy.
So I just want to toss out something for people to think about. It looks to me politically, the state had a commitment to help fund these new wings, which were to, which were to house two populations. The, the realignment inmates who previously would have gone back to state prison, the re-offenders who would have previously gone back to state prison, were under SB 100, AB 109, were now reassigned to county jails. So the new wings, and these are multiples built throughout the state, was to house that population and the population in county jails that had serious behavioral health issues. That was the purpose of the state grant. And there was a political will in Sacramento to fund that program to a certain amount. And for whatever reason, the political will in Sacramento, it seems to me, is not there to follow through and complete the project, as those construction costs have escalated everywhere in the state, not just here. And, and yet, the state, which has had unprecedented surpluses and has spent millions of dollars, billions of dollars on all sorts of projects since that, have, the political direction of the state has shifted to other, other needs. And, you know, the Ford Street, for example, is recipient of one of those newer priorities of the state, these treatment facilities, fantastic, it's a legitimate need. But this, these dollars we're looking at are county discretionary dollars, local tax dollars. And I'm just, I'm just putting out there, that if the state is not willing to increase, restore its share of the project, originally it was 25 from them, 1 million from us. Now it's 25 from them, and everything in cost overruns goes to us. And if they're not willing to step up and provide additional funds for the jail, but they're willing to fund other projects in the county, maybe we ought to react to that. Maybe we ought to say, okay, then we'll take our dollars and we'll fund the projects that we have to fund in Mendocino County, like this jail. If they're not willing to step up and provide additional funds, then they're just going to have to step up and provide a greater share of these other projects that they do want to fund. So I just think that that needs to be something we consider as we discuss this, because the political winds in Sacramento do shift from time to time, and clearly it looks to me like it has on this, on this jail project, which wasn't a Mendocino County project, it was a statewide push by the, by the state in all counties in California.
I agree with you wholeheartedly Supervisor Jordy, and then I think the fact is, states' responsibilities are slowly but surely being shifted to locals, and there are some positives behind that, because I think that we do a better job with the people we know and the people who are in our communities. There are some positives behind it. However, when we take on the state's responsibilities, they should be responsible to assist us in that, if they're going two steps away from it. And I can't help but believe that, you know, there are a lot of these projects that have gone back to the state, because sheriff's offices and counties could not afford them. And we are not seeing any of the revenue from those projects that were handed back also. But this is becoming a mandate, and we have, we have got to meet this mandate. Now, as things began to progress here, I absolutely believe in the work that Ford Street is doing. We're partners with them when we release people out of custody into treatment and whatnot, but I agree with what you're saying in the fact that if the political winds are to support those, then by golly, let's have the state support those, but let's deal with what our responsibility is for the county as well. And having a jail that was built when I was 16, and trust me, I don't look like I'm 16 anymore, I saw myself in the mirror this morning, and expecting that to meet the needs, I would not put my children in the Model A Ford in accident to go down a busy California freeway, because it is not built for the times that we are in. It's not, it wouldn't be safe, and I think that that's a portion of where we're at right now.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may, for the record, Ms. Williams mentioned that Director Miller and myself pulled the item for an approval vote. We did not.
Through the chair, if I may, our Zoom just crashed, and we are having some issues, so we are no longer streaming to the public on Zoom.
How would you like to handle this? Do we continue, or do we take a short break while we try to bring Zoom back up?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, let's take a short break, five minutes. We're good? Okay, all right, never mind, we don't need a break.
I would just recommend to give a minute so people could get back into the Zoom, because right now it looks like it's connecting and we're not able to. We have the Zoom running, it's just not connecting to the servers correctly.
So let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, if that's okay.
People can't.
Okay, let's take a short break, five minutes, and then we'll get back. I'm sorry. We apologize for the loss of Zoom, but technology is great except when it isn't. And we appear to have corrected the problem or moving on with the meeting. So Item 4A is discussion and possible action, including acceptance of presentation of the library advisory boards and a report. Sponsor is Cultural Services.
Good morning. I'm Barb Chapman, Acting Director for the Cultural Services Agency, and our library advisory board is here to provide their annual report to the Board of Supervisors. Michelle Savoy, Olga O'Neil, and Carolyn Snyder.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us give this report. Just from listening to what's been going on since we've been here, the libraries are very fortunate. We have funding. We have our own funding. And because of the Measure O that was passed, we have enough funding to be able to continue and do capital improvements. So on the libraries, which are sorely in need of it, the other aspect, of course, that's come up is there isn't enough staff in the county to do some of the construction work that will be needed. So I just want to go over the report. The fact that the library has so much community support has made it kind of the golden child in a weird way in the county. We have so many people who are helping out on it. Libraries were opened again in 2021 after COVID. They were able to open full time. The A-87, excuse me, cost issues were resolved for now, and we're keeping a close look on the budget, but that seems to be resolved. And in the 2019 Library Advisory Board plan, we have done, accomplished most of it. Developed a capital improvement fund, and that was through Measure O. Forty percent of the library fund money now is available for capital improvements. And the second one is to improve or replace the Ukiah Library. We're working on that. And we're developing long-range plans for all current and possibly future libraries that don't even exist right now. And we have a county library strategic plan that was developed by our previous director. I want to sort of thank everybody who worked on this Measure O, getting, gathering signatures, sitting around on card tables outside of grocery stores, all the friends of the library, people, community members who volunteered to do that. And we were able to get 4,500 signatures. People brought us coffee when it was raining out. I mean, it was a very, very supportive. And I think we're just very lucky that, and that libraries are as beloved as they are. I want to talk a bit about the Ukiah Library Plan for Improvement. Originally, on this agenda item, we were asking the board to approve Measure O funds to be used for a feasibility study for Ukiah, since it clearly needs to be bigger and something needs to change there. I was informed, though, that that, in order to go ahead with the feasibility study, that we would need to have more detailed information for what the Ukiah Library needs. So when an RFP is put out for a feasibility study organization, that there's more, more information available. So that will not be an action item at this time, and it might not be until next year. But we do have some things already in motion. The board approved Measure O money as matching funds for the grant for the Willetts' library roof, which at this point has a gargantuan tarp on it and is sandbagged and is waiting in line with project, other projects to be completed. But that is a capital improvement that Measure O is able to fund. I have the sad news that the Fort Bragg grant to, or the expansion of the Fort Bragg Library was not, was not granted from the building forward project of the State Library. So the Fort Bragg will be in line for the next granting cycle, but there were, the issue is poverty. We're not, we're not poor enough in this county. The poverty level is not as dire as it would need to be to get the grant. So that, and we're studying other things where it wasn't, you know, what priority that grant was to see what will happen in the future for the funding. But the Fort Bragg friends are continuing to do fundraising and keep money in a special account for that expansion. Right now, it's a cleaned-off lot right next to the library. And we'll have other, there's other recommendations that we'll have, but we'll be able to do some long-term planning because Measure O money is permanent. So we'll be coming back to you. We'll be working with the library director. I know that there'll be a hiring process for that. In the meantime, Barb Chapman is the interim director. So we'll be coming back. The lab will be coming back to ask for more project approvals, since that is our mandate for Measure O for the monies. And in the report, I have to, we have to praise the friends, all the people who support the libraries with their volunteer work. All the Friends of the Library are the ones who raised the money for the programs, and they also helped with Measure O, and they helped fund some of the, some of the information we had to get out on Measure O. So I want to recognize how much that they do to keep things going. I know many county programs have lots of volunteers, but I think we're, we're very fortunate looking around at all the libraries. You have, for instance, like Round Valley Library in Covelo, they are the hub. They are the community hub. And that library provides enormous amount of services. They can have community meetings there. There, for instance, the farmer's market, community radio project, a skate park project. Everything kind of revolves around that library. And those Friends of the Library bought, I'm sure you know this, but it always amazes me, they bought and redid a building, and the county rents it or leases it for the library. But that was the Friends' work. Same in, in Point Arena. Was a complete, Friends raised the money, bought a building, renovated the building, and it's, again, a community hub. It's hard to say any of them are not a community hub. You know that Leightonville, the most recent library, opened in, I think it was March of this year, and that came together again because of Friends of the Library. So I just have to recognize the work that they do is astounding. Fort Bragg continuing to work on the expansion and continue serving the community there. Willetts continuing to serve the community. It's, when we were listening to the jail, the concerns about the jail, about mental health, I mean, the library in some ways deals with that, too. For instance, the branch managers wanted to have Narcan available in case someone OD'd in the library. I mean, it's, it's really a center for, for the community in many, in many ways. We had eclipse glasses in all the libraries so people could have a chance to see the partial eclipse on Saturday. And the Bookmobile, as you know, continues to go to 24 places twice a month to make sure that people have access to books. They can have access to Wi-Fi. So I guess, you know, we're continuing, we're continuing to work with the director and the new director. We're continuing to work with the libraries to make sure that everyone's needs are met and that the capital improvements that are, money that is now available can be used as quickly as it can be to make changes that are really needed. Like I say, the roof, the roof in Willetts, and, which also will involve solar. And for Fort Bragg, the expansion, and for Ukiah, the expansion and improvement of that library, whether it stays in its current building or is somewhere else in Ukiah. So I wish we had an action item, but I just want to thank everybody who's involved in this. Thank, thank the Board of Supervisors for the support so far and continuing support for, for the libraries and for the library improvements, the capital improvements. So, there. I'm asking you to, well, you accept the report. It's part of your agenda. It's on your agenda items. And if you have questions, it's a time.
We do have questions. I'll start with Supervisor Hasek.
Thank you, Chairman Gordy. Yeah, I really appreciate the lab's support of the libraries and all you do and volunteer work and everyone who made Measure O happen. Couple of questions. One is with the Fort Bragg and library not getting the $3 million state grant. So that will put everything on hold and we'll need to regroup on that?
Um, we, yeah, I'm in Fort Bragg, so I'll say we are looking at where the, where the grant fell in the list of grants that were given. Were we were second in line, third in line, and find out a little more and if there's any more details that we might need to provide. But I think it's the next funding cycle for that grant, because there will continue to be more, will be in that already. When, when they turned down the grant, they said, yeah, be considered the next time around.
Okay. And what would be helpful, for me at least, and I think for the public, too, is to have an accounting of what Measure O is bringing in, you know, and seeing how it can be spent, you know, the different operational versus capital improvements, and just having that kind of in a clear, clear way presentation, so, so we all know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jordy.
Well, certainly the library services are among the very few bright spots in county government here in Menasino County. So thank you for that, for everybody, including the library employees and the, and all the community members who supported our libraries. There's no other county service where the community steps up and, and contributes above and beyond basic tax dollars that I can think of. So it really, in a way, could be a model for other county services. You know, people might not volunteer at the jail, but, but there might be other county services where people contribute like they do for our libraries. Trying to think creatively about some other funding sources, and I'm hopeful that, you know, the studiousness of, of both the library supporters and the staff that are working on this, that they will identify ways to score higher in the next round and, you know, and, and get funding eventually. But, but still, the needs countywide are still substantial, and the sales tax by itself won't be enough. So it'll be, it'll be a combination, in my view, of community fundraising, as we've seen substantially in Fort Bragg so far, and, and grants, and the sales tax. And one of the grant funding sources that I'm optimistic the county could better access in the future, we're actually in the process of removing from planning and building and bringing over to the executive office where we have the beginnings of a small grant division, the Community Development Block Grant Program. And it's federal funds administered by the state, so nobody enjoys working with that program because it's a lot of paperwork, both at the state and federal level, but it's a consistent funding source. That funding source provides for any city in California and any county in California to access each year $150,000 times two. You could get two of these grants in a planning, for a planning and technical assistance grant. So, for example, the Ukiah Library Project, which at this point, I would say, probably needs to be scoped as to what is the need for the Ukiah Valley, the greater Ukiah area. Secondarily, after that, sort of sequentially, but could be one grant program, then alternate sites that could accommodate that need, whether it's an expansion of the existing facility, a brand-new facility, you know, I would see it as sort of a phased planning process. That, to me, seems to be a very logical use of the county, should the county actually apply every year, which it hasn't so far while this grant program's been over in planning and building. But now I have hope, now that it's moving to the executive office, we will be applying every year. We could potentially have a grant, a planning technical assistance grant that would do that for the Ukiah Project. Secondarily, one of the other advantages of that program is for actual grants for implementation. That grant program for implementation needs to be targeted towards, in order to score high, the applicant, application has to be for a project that is almost entirely, almost entirely low-income targeted. So it's, it's fairly narrow in the types of projects that the county could potentially fund on a competitive basis. However, a city or a county can also, at the time that they get a competitive grant, have a 10% set-aside for an eligible but not competitive, in other words, not scored, project. And, and where that comes into play is if the county was to do what the city of Fort Bragg and others have done, and I'm hoping the county in the future will be doing this, we would be applying for a competitive grant that will score high, have a 10% set-aside for a county building, could be a county library, could be, could be the jail, who knows, could be a county building that needs additional funds in that 10% set-aside. Because one of the competitive projects that the county gets when it does apply is for business revolving loans, and because the employees of that business simply have to be low-income. And when those loans are paid back, if the county has an existing project, i.e. the 10% set-aside project for that county building, when those loans are paid back, the county, that's called program income, and the county at that point can add that money to the 10% set-aside project. So even though the 10% set-aside will never fully fund or even largely fund any project, if the county gets its act together in the future through the executive office with this program, we will have more money coming in on an annual basis and then direct it to those 10% set-aside projects. Finally, so that, so I think this is, you know, a substantial opportunity for the county. In the last several years, I think it was about six years I counted that's on the state website, the six most recent years reported, the county in Menasino had only secured $1 million from this program. CDVg two million, City of Ukiah, 2 million, City of Fort Bragg, 6. We have more low-income census blocks than any, either of those cities. We should have had more than 6. And so I'm hoping, again, if the county through the executive office is aggressive in this program, we will, six years down the road, we'll be reporting that we had 8 or 10 million dollars in grants. And, and we've used some of that program income as it gets paid back to, to fund county buildings. So I guess, I know that's not an action, the action item today is to accept your report, but I think it's helpful for the board, if, if they're interested, to kind of reiterate this concept that as the county executive office takes over this grant program, we need to be directing the executive office to prioritize county buildings with the grants. Again, the competitive portion might continue to be things like business loans, but when that money comes back, it needs to get sent into county buildings. And, and I think that the library projects could be, you know, on that list of county inventory that have a gap that can't be met entirely by the sales tax, can't be met entirely by library grants from the state, and can't entirely be met by fundraising. But, you know, I do think that as we've seen in Point Arena, or Covelo, and in Fort Bragg, it'd be nice to see, I'll just put it out there, the greater Ukiah area, step it up a little bit, and, and get involved with the Friends of the Ukiah Library and, and help bring in, you know, over the next 10 years, I'd like to see them bring in a couple million dollars towards what could be, you know, a generational opportunity to have, you know, a really, you know, landmark building in Ukiah for a new library in Ukiah. So those are my thoughts.
Supervisor Jordy, did you want to actually give some direction to staff regarding the CDVG grants? Or how do you want to handle that? Because you brought up some good points, and I would hate for us just Because you brought up some good points, and I would hate for us just to lose them.
Well, I guess look to the executive office, if they, I mean, I've said this a few times, I think they're kind of getting it.
If that's the consensus of the board, certainly we can do that. We do have an item coming back in December to talk about CDVG and moving that forward. I will state, we haven't been able to apply for CDVG because our 2122 outside audit has not been completed.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to have an opportunity to dig into this a little deeper in December, so let's look forward to that. Yes?
Yeah, just wanted to pass on an idea to Supervisor Jordy, that I learned the hard way on Bauer Park where we got $2.2 million, and a year later, there's nothing to show. That if you want to, if you're taking on a capital project for the library, contract the whole thing out, the project management, every aspect of it. And not criticizing anybody, CEO hears from me every week about Bauer Park, we just don't have the capability or the staffing or whatever it takes to move projects along. I wouldn't want to see a library project fall into that, that same fate. And so I would, I would, in the application, specify that we need those outside resources to move the project forward, project manage it, do architecture, whatever you would think facilities could do, contract it out, because right now, the county's just not in a position to move at a reasonable pace.
So on that point, I know that the Friends of the Fort Bragg Library, the Fort Bragg library staff want, both administration and at the Fort Bragg branch, wanted to use a project manager to both scope the project and project manage, you know, a contractor that would build it. And I know that there were, now the grant wasn't received, we now know, but, but that process did not move forward to allow for that, that design-build. And I do, I would like to see some sort of, I agree, I would like to see some direction of staff that, that the board supports, supports the design-build concept, because the system we have at General Services isn't working. We've got a backlog of project, we all know that. We have some projects with funding, as in the Willets roof, we have money for the Willets roof, we have money for the solar for there, and we can't even move it forward. So we've got too many projects at General Services, even though we've staffed up General Services, so we need a process by which we can hand this off to someone else that will get the projects built and not five, six years late.
Certainly, we can take that direction and look into doing the design-build and moving things forward, yes.
So the next part of that would be too, if we, we get a contract, it goes to county council, and also frequently, things don't move very quick, so any thoughts about how that could be corrected?
I believe our county contracting process and the review process is actually moving pretty smoothly. It, when it does get slowed, is in the context of state non-boiler plate contracts, which typically are the case for capital development projects, but I know, I can speak for, only for myself, you know, with Behavioral Health and Social Services, I handle their contracts. I've, I'm very engaged with them, and we work closely together. They send me the, the draft ahead of time, and especially with these complicated non-boiler plate agreements, and I'm sure that, that the same can happen with our office in the future for, for this. We certainly hear priorities on certain contracts, and I know that our office is not impeding that process, at least not intentionally, and so communication with the departments and our office is key on that, so that we hear the priority. But I'm hearing ahead of time on this, and I'm sure we'll look forward to it.
Okay, sounds good. I, I have a few questions or comments, so first of all, thank you, thank you all for what you do. Thank you for coming today and giving a report. So one of the things I love to see in these reports are some actual data, and the first thing I'm thinking of is, do you value the, you know, kind of a dollar value of your volunteer services? Do you figure out how many hours of volunteers you get? Do you assign a number to that, you know, like a, even if it was minimum wage, do you have any sense for what the community is putting into the library system?
Uh, I guess we all just keep working at it. I don't, I don't know that we've ever put dollars signs to.
I encourage you to do that, because I think that that would make, that'd be eye-opening for a lot of the general public that isn't using the library on a regular basis.
Barb Chapman for the Cultural Services Agency. And we do add up, add up all the NCO hours and put them in the state, California State Library Report, and we can come up with a number, I don't have that right now.
Okay, well, I think that's worth putting in your annual report, beef your report up a little bit more with some statistics. I'm really curious on the number of library cards that are out there. How many people have library cards in Mendocino County?
Oh, what do I have? I think I just have them, 45,000, about.
About 45,000, so that means that almost one out of every two Mendocino County resident has a library card, which is an awesome number. I mean, you, you should be proud of that.
Yeah, we are, I mean, we, the libraries are awesome. They are awesome, and people continue to come, they bring their kids, their kids then bring their kids, there's just, there's so many programs that are enriching, entertaining, ideas that can be talked about through adult, teen, even kid programs. It's, it's really, libraries are the most remarkable things. They're free, anybody can come, anybody can use them.
Kind of moving on with that, is what are the metrics of use? You know, who, what age group, when, when you look at ethnicity, are there, there people out there we're missing that we should be more inclusive with? Have, have you thought about that? Do you have any numbers?
Barb might be.
Yeah, Barbara Chapman, Cultural Services Agency. So another agenda item, it was for consent, had a lot of statistics in it, this is from the library department, and we will add total cardholders, but we were just looking back on the last fiscal year, and we had 3,920 new cardholders just over the last year, and we have, you know, the number of visitors, and what was some of the other information you're asking?
I'm just wondering if we're, if we're reaching all of our, our citizens.
Well, one of the goals of the library, and it's through the measures that have been passed, are to reach out to the communities that are underserved, and we have the bookmobile going places that don't have library branches, and we also have an outreach van with staff that go out and serve in places that don't have a branch nearby. Where our goal is to continue doing that and doing it more and more, and we're going to be starting the library by mail for people who are homebound and can't get to the branch or to the bookmobile, and we're in the process, we're hoping to launch it in December.
And, let's see, in addition to that, the measurable income is something that really should be reported by the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, correct? They, you know, I was talking with my wife about when she was on B-HAB, that Lloyd Ware would come every meeting and discuss the finances for Measure B. So are you hearing from our treasurer, tax collector on this item?
The income really just started coming in, and I can give the numbers to them regularly if they can report it to you.
Okay. I, I hope that you keep the, the library advisory board and Friends of the Library advised on that, because I think that's really important information, they worked really hard to make those funds available. And then last question, what, what about looking at the future? So Supervisor Williams talks a lot about, you know, our commitment to broadband and digital media, and I just wondered what's going on with the libraries and that, I didn't see anything in your report specifically, so, and again, if we're talking about homebound people, this seems like a good way to be able to reach them.
And I, I would like to say that we have had excellent support from the library staff. And Barb brings us data every, every time budgets, and in the annual report, it does cover a lot of, and the strategic plan that our former director gave to the board, it did cover a lot of these. We weren't sure that that's what, as an advisory board committee, you know, it was an advisory committee, we're in, you know, have a different position, obviously, is, don't have staff, we don't have staff. So we rely on them very much for the information that we're getting and that they are presenting to you. But for the future, this is great that we would include that for our, our report as well. And I really want to thank Barb because she has, that meant, has been a real, a real help to us, I believe.
Just, just to answer Glenn's question, there are Chrome computers that can be checked out from the library for somebody that's homebound and might need a computer, and there are hotspots connections so they can also connect, and those can be checked out for a period, I think up to three weeks.
Fantastic.
In the past couple of years, we've implemented the SCNC network at every library branch, including in its fiber optic at Round Valley and Leightonville, and neither of them had fiber optic before, but partially due to the library starting, they, they have it going to their communities now. In addition, the, yeah, the grant for the hotspots, we are able to piggyback onto a cheaper one because the grant money's going to be running out, so we can continue providing hotspots for checkout.
One, one last question or point, and I know that you, you're looking at maybe future branches, is there a possibility of collaborating with like Bukai Unified? I'm thinking of Hopland specifically, where I know that the charter school has extra space. Is there a possibility of being able to work with the school system in some of our remote areas to have library access at least some of the time, so that it doesn't require a bookmobile, or has that ever been considered?
Would be considered, I mean, there's, often something starts because people are interested in the Hopland area, and they get together, and that's how sort of friends are formed, and people start looking at, yeah, they want to have a library. I don't know how great it is to have a library in a school because of all the restrictions about going onto a school campus, and sometimes, as I know from libraries that were on school campuses in Sacramento County, people felt uncomfortable going to the library because students were there all the time, and for whatever reason, it made them feel like they'd never be able to get on a computer. It just, in my opinion, from what I've seen, it doesn't work well. But, but it doesn't mean not to have something in Hopland, but just to look in a, in a different place. And if I could add, our libraries do serve our schools. I mean, it's, it's a different look, but, you know, between the field trips that they take, and they do a lot of, they, a lot of kids in libraries that way, and our, in Willets, our charter school is right across the street from the library, they go every week and with all their classes, and our Sherwood School that's out, way out Sherwood Road comes down to the library, I think every two weeks, could be every week. So they also, you know, are providing service that's a partnership with, with the schools that way.
Great, Dan.
I think, looking forward, it seems to me that the library services are kind of changing in two ways. One is, services are being made available to the public outside of the brick and mortar facilities. Now, today, didn't really talk a lot about it, but it's, it may be more in the report from the library staff, but, you know, the fact that you can download books from home, assuming you have internet. Secondly, as you referenced, you're providing the checkout of a hotspot at someone's home who doesn't have internet, and, and so people can access documents without ever coming, without going into a brick and mortar library. And, and secondly, I think the libraries will continue to evolve with their brick and mortar facilities, and if anybody wants to see what I believe will be the next vision for a library in Mendocino County, they just need to look at, at what's proposed in the grant for the Fort Bragg branch. It's about a 50% expansion or less of the footprint, but it's a remodel of the space, and they're kind of going, new libraries today are kind of going away from the computer stations and more to tablets, and the idea that you could check out a tablet, not just offsite, but take it anywhere on the campus of the library. And if you look at that design, they were going to have, they will have, on the expanded property, they'll have an outdoor garden where someone could either be browsing on their, you know, on their tablet in the library building or outside in the garden, and without positioning everybody at a, at a desktop. And then secondly, they're also looking at, well, how are libraries being used in the future? And in that plan, they called for two private booths, good visibility in to those booths with glass doors, glass windows, but, but the idea was that some library patrons, for example, don't have another place to maybe meet with, could be a career counselor, it could be any, anybody that had, you know, a legitimate service that could be brought into that public space. And I, I think when we look at, you know, we have our Career Point Office on North State Street in Ukiah, maybe the future is we don't have an op, I'm just throwing out ideas, maybe in the future, we don't have a, a Career Point Office, you know, that is marginally used serving one part of the county, maybe instead what we have is that service lands at each library branch at least once a month, or at least twice a month. And there's space, flexible space within those libraries for a service like that. So I'm just saying, I think if we look at the future of the libraries, they're not going to, they're not going to look exactly the way they look today.
Yep, that's right. It's, yep, computers changed everything and access to things that are out there in cyberspace. All this has really changed it. And the fact that in a county like Mendocino, where it's very rural, people are very scattered around, that there's a, there is a community center, I mean, physically in the brick and mortar, there's a place where people can meet, or organizations can meet, so there's a way to pull people together on issues, as well as allow them to be in their own homes and have access to materials. And, and it also provides a space to, you know, when you think about mental health, and we have people that come to the library and read the paper every day, and that is their connection with seeing other people, even if they're just sitting there reading a lot, you know? And that's like, you know, they're reading the newspaper, and that, you know, that might be a generation that's going to be gone soon, but it's, it's, it's their connection. And so I feel like the more that we can do to bring people together in, you know, reading on their tablet in a garden with other people, you're not as isolated as doing it in your, in your home, so it's, it's pretty exciting what's happening.
That, that's important for, for people to not be isolated, to get out in public and have a routine. Supervisor Haskjack.
Yeah, just talking about, you know, the libraries do serve this critical function as a community hub, and I really appreciate all the things, whether it's a feed library or, you know, the Halloween activities that are going on in some of the libraries, all of these things create community, and I really appreciate it. I went to the library on Friday to pick up a book and ended up with a couple glasses for, to see the eclipse.
Yeah.
And so I really appreciate that, I'm not blind today because of it. And so, really appreciate it, but I just wanted to get back to the Measure O and that the funding, you know, or financial reports, if we could get those sent to the board, you know, just the morning we approved the Measure P, and we got a breakdown of how that distribution would work and the monies, and it would be good to see the same with Measure O.
Well, there, it is in the budget, however, the auditor's office said that they're not going to split it out until the end of the fiscal year after it closes, so.
Might be a while.
Maybe we could make a request of auditor's office to provide that information.
Okay.
All right. All right, then with that, I think we're done, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for your questions, and any answers.
Okay. We're scheduled for a break, do, do we need a break, staff? Yes?
Yeah, the clerk is fine, so we can continue if the board would like.
Okay, then we'll continue, we'll go on to the next item. Next item is a, number four C, is a, a notice, public hearing, discussion, and possible action regarding appeal of zoning administrators' action approving the name Lincoln Ridge Road for a private road serving approximately 17.
Yeah, the clerk is fine, so we can continue if the board would like.
Okay, then we'll continue. We'll go on to the next item. Next item is a number four C, is a notice, public hearing, discussion, and possible action regarding appeal of zoning administrator's action approving the name Lincoln Ridge Road for a private road serving approximately 17 parcels in the Westport area currently known as Seaview Drive. So has the clerk established public notice?
Proper notice has been established.
Okay. The chair will now open the public hearing and announce the hearing procedures. So the board and clerk will notice correspondence and telephone calls received.
All correspondence and voicemails left have been sent to your emails.
Okay, thank you. Staff presentation.
Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. Give us just one moment here, we do have a presentation to share.
Okay.
An apologies, it'll be just one moment, we're just having trouble getting access to our shared network to pull it up, so give us just a moment.
All right, good morning. Thank you for the patience here. Russ Ford, Planning and Building Services. So this morning, we are dealing with project number RN 202204, which is a private road name petition. In this case, we're looking at an appeal of a previously approved private road name, Lincoln Ridge Road in the Westport area. The subject road is located in the community of Westport, approximately 2.6 miles north of the town of Westport, and is currently identified as Seaview Drive. Seaview Drive connects to State Route 1, as shown on the map here, the yellow line represents the road. It serves approximately 17 parcels along the top of Lincoln Ridge. No historical information regarding adoption of the name Seaview Drive could be found in the department's records, though it appears to have been in use since approximately 1980. A commercial business, the Howard Creek Inn, is located near the intersection of Seaview Drive and State Route 1. The inn is owned by Charles and Sally Grigg, who are the appellantants for this project. The inn currently uses the address 40501 North Highway 1 and has for many years. The appellantants wish to be exempted from the county's addressing standards in order to retain their existing address for commercial purposes. Just a little back, bit of background on this project. So in October of last year, CAL FIRE reached out to Planning and Building Services with concerns about a duplicate road name in the Westport area. Staff investigated and discovered that there were two Seaview Drives in the Westport area, a private road serving approximately 17 parcels north of town, and a county road in the town of Westport that serves approximately 10 parcels. Back in January of 2021, the board adopted ordinance number 4481, which streamlined the road naming process for private roads when those requests were submitted by emergency services agencies. So that ordinance was designed expressly to address this kind of situation. Staff determined that renaming of the private road to be the best way to expedite a solution to the safety concerns raised by CAL FIRE, and proposed the name Lincoln Ridge Road to reflect the geographic location. The zoning administrator approved the change to Lincoln Ridge Road in February of this year, and directed staff to update corresponding addresses. Staff completed this and sent out to all affected parcels in June, and August, an appeal of that decision was filed. So a little bit of background about addressing, the regulatory framework. The county's addressing authority comes from Chapter 1816 of the Mendocino County Code, formerly known as the Master Grid and Property Numbering System, informally as the Addressing Ordinance. The Addressing Ordinance grants authority to the planning director or their designee for updates and maintenance. The director's designee is known as the address coordinator. Every formally named road in the county is assigned an address range based on its location within the county, its orientation, and its length. The base of an address range is dictated by the road's distance from its appropriate meridian. For roads with an east-west classification, the meridian is Highway 101. Roads with north-south classifications use an imaginary line that runs either through the courthouse, or in the case of coastal regions, the mouth of the Navarre River. Classification of roads and application of the coastal meridian are at the discretion of the address coordinator. Once an address range has been established, all addresses assigned to that road must fall within the established range with odd numbers to the east and south, and even numbers to the north and west. Parcels that don't abut the road are addressed based on the point where their driveway intersects the named road. And you can see on this map, this is an example of Ravens Pike Road in the Booneville area. There are a number of structures that lie away from the named parcel, so the structures are addressed based on where their driveway intersects the named section of road. Quote from the address ordinance, "Numbers may only be assigned to the last officially named road or street traveled to access the subject property. Unofficial, local, or alternate names for roads or driveways may not be used in the assignment of addresses." Another example of that down here at the corner of Mountain View Road and Ravens Pike is a parcel that abuts both roads, however, because the access comes off of Ravens Pike, it has a Ravens Pike address. So back to the appeal, the Howard Creek Inn is accessed via a private driveway connecting Seaview Drive, Lincoln Ridge Road, and has been using the address 40501 North Highway 1 for many years. Because the inn does not have direct access to Highway 1, staff believes this to be a non-standard address issued in error. New address assignments highlighted this existing error with the adoption of Lincoln Ridge Road. In order to maintain consistency with the county's addressing ordinance and based on its current access, the Howard Creek Inn should have an address that falls within the established range for Seaview Drive. So the board has a couple of options this morning. If you choose to deny the appeal, the name of the road will change to Lincoln Ridge Road, and the previously sent address letters will remain valid. This would bring the road into consistency with the address ordinance and addresses the safety concerns raised by CAL FIRE. This is staff's recommended action. If the board chooses to uphold the appeal, the name of the road will remain Seaview Drive, previous notices changing to Lincoln Ridge Road will be rescinded. A corrected address range was calculated for Lincoln Ridge, so those numbers would also revert to the previous ones used under Seaview Drive. At that point, staff would request direction from the board regarding the desired solution to the duplicate road names, and the board may also choose to provide direction regarding the address number for the inn, which would revert to a non-conforming number. Staff alone does not have the authority to recognize a non-conforming number. Finally, if the board should decide to deny the appeal, the staff had a couple of options for the appellantants. As we've discussed previously, the only way to retain the Highway 1 address would be for the inn to have direct access to Highway 1. It would be possible to construct a new approach that would require at minimum an encroachment permit from CAL Trans, possibly a coastal development permit. Alternately, an identification sign could be erected at the intersection of Seaview Drive and State Route 1, as shown in this photo from Google Street View, which is several years old. No address signs of any kind currently exist at the road. The southern property line of the parcel on which the inn sits is actually the center line of Seaview Drive, so this would be considered an onsite sign, and given the final construction and size and location of the sign, it may be possible to exempt it from a coastal development permit process. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions.
Supervisor Jourdey?
Yeah, Russ, just on the point, can you bring back up that last photograph?
Let me go back here.
Sorry, I should have asked the question before you closed the file.
Is this the one you're looking for?
Yeah. Can you just clarify that last statement about, where would the location of an on-premises sign be located? Is it visible from the picture?
Correct. So my thought is, the property line for the inn property would be roughly along the center line of the private road here, so long as the sign was outside of the CAL Trans right of way, it could be somewhere in this general area, it would be very visible from traffic on Highway 1.
And for clarification, did you say that a sign of some kind in that location could be placed without a coastal development permit?
There's exceptions for signage in the code. I think it's limited to two by two, and then wood construction is encouraged, and it obviously can't be placed in an escher, so if there are any considerations there, then that would rule it out, but there are.
Fortunately, it doesn't appear to be an escher there.
It doesn't appear to be, but sometimes it's hard to tell.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's my question.
Supervisor Williams?
Is this the appropriate time for questions and comments?
Well, I think we might want to hear from the applicant, maybe, and then, does that make more sense?
Well, how about one that's related?
Okay.
Because it may help steer. So I was fire chief for a number of years, and in an area where the county decided to letter two ridges, and then realized that's a mistake, and people still have phones that were installed 35 years ago, and so when they call 911, it comes up as a lettered road, sending people off course. There was once a fire at my house, I went and got a water truck, it wasn't at my house, it was on the other ridge, right? So I really appreciate these longstanding mix-ups with addresses, because it throws off emergency services, which are potentially life-saving, and time is of the essence. But that said, looking at this proposal, I feel really bad that somehow this situation happened, and these poor people have an established address, their business is based on it, and I don't want to pull the rug out from under them. Is there any possibility in allowing dual addresses as sort of a compromise? It looks like they're close to Highway 1, you know, I could argue that they have two addresses, a Highway 1 and this other address, and they're free to use whatever one they want. Why isn't that an option for the board?
Typically, because addressing is done administratively by staff, you know.
I understand, but in this case, we've somehow, we've made a mistake collectively over the years, nobody in this room, right? So how do we undo that wrong? I don't know if pulling the rug out from their existing address is really the best for anyone. I'm wondering if we just added a second address and then let them use whatever they want. Looking through this packet, the fire department doesn't object to it, and that would have been my concern. I know CAL FIRE might be a little confused. The difference is, the local fire department, they're out there every day, they know the addresses. CAL FIRE, you have rotating staff that coming and going, and it takes them time to learn, and by the time they do, maybe they get assigned to a different unit, or you know, they're at a different station. So I understand that concern, but where my mind goes is just give them two addresses, they have a parcel that touches both roads.
So on the point raised by Supervisor Williams, which I wholeheartedly agree with, I think, as I understand this process, the existing code does not allow county staff to make the exception that we're being asked to consider today and that you're bringing up. I believe, though, that the board does, today, the board has authority to give direction for an exception, which would allow what you just suggested.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, if you're done with your presentation, then I think we'll hear from the other side.
Hi, my name is Sally Grigg, and this is my husband, Charles Grigg, otherwise known as Sonny. And I wrote my speech, and I'm not quite sure how to take the things out that he's already mentioned, so I'm just going to give it as I wrote it. We have been the sole proprietors and managers of Howard Creek Ranch Inn three miles north of Westport for over 50 years. It has been a historic site since 1867, enjoying Highway 1 access for over 100 years. Some weeks ago, we received a notice that the road to the south of our inn, Seaview Drive, which we own and traverses our property, was being changed for safety reasons to Lincoln Ridge Road because of the confusion with Seaview Drive in Westport. Since we have always enjoyed direct Highway 1 access, and since we had no objections, we did not come to the change the road name hearing. To our surprise, we were notified that our historic inn's address was being changed from 40501 North Highway 1 to Lincoln Ridge Road. Our 70-foot easement entrance goes through a 40-foot wide driveway. Did you, ma'am, did you give them the things that I gave you? Yeah, okay. The photographs are show two 20-foot roads, which is this 40-foot wide driveway directly through the CAL Trans 80-foot easement. This extra wide driveway has come right off Highway 1 since 1971. We own the entire driveway on both sides, people have an easement over it, but the roads belong to our ranch. If you will notice the attached map, and by that, I'm referring to the frontage road. You all have this? Yes. These all have north, almost all have North Highway 1 addresses, and they don't even have direct access, they're off a frontage road. Consequently, we ask that we retain our 40501 North Highway 1 address. Furthermore, unlike Seaview Drive, our inn is not along a ridge and does not correspond to the name Lincoln Ridge Road. It is in the valley bisected by Howard Creek that flows through our land. Our address on Highway 1 means we are adjacent to the Pacific, where Howard Creek empties into the ocean with whitewater views of breaking waves. We are not up a ridge. The fire department has written a letter, and they say the renaming of Seaview Drive to Lincoln Ridge Road should not affect the Howard Creek Ranch Inn property. Lincoln Ridge Road provides access to homes on a ridge to the east and a few hundred feet above that property. Changing the address of the Howard Creek Ranch Inn to an address on Lincoln Ridge Road will be likely to cause confusion for agencies responding to 911 emergency calls at the Howard Creek Ranch Inn. We also have a letter from the MAC, the Westport Municipal Advisory Council, and their recommended action is to uphold the name Lincoln Ridge Road, but assess new address assignments individually and direct staff to make changes at the discretion of the board. And they point out, referring to this map here, as a result of an appeal against RN 2022-005 PBS, the renaming of this to Westport Way, properties located on the frontage road with Highway 1 frontage and having Seaview Drive addresses will be given Highway 1 addresses. Properties located in the same frontage road with Highway 1 addresses will retain their existing address. 40501, our current address, North Highway 1 fits this description and should have been included with the other addresses included in the RN 2022-0005 appeal, with the result of no address change. We have spent many thousands of dollars on internet sites to promote our address as it currently is, i.e. 40501 North Highway 1. Over 100 places on the internet, many books, magazines, even a TV show, and hundreds of thousands of past returning guests. We get people from 35 years ago. We have lots and lots and lots of return.
From all over the world.
From everywhere. It would be impossible for us to change this address after. It would be impossible for us to change this address after 50 years. I don't think we should have to, actually. Anyway, also attached are two pictures of our south entrance, a map showing the frontage road formerly known as Seascape Drive. This road here, that is now North Highway 1 addresses, that they're trying to take the North Highway 1 address away from us, originally was Seascape Drive, according to the subdivision map. I don't know how they all got North Highway 1 addresses, and I was unaware of it until this whole episode arrived, but nonetheless, they all have North Highway 1 addresses. Why should we be required to change our address? It just doesn't make any sense. Anyway, does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicants?
Just just for clarification, and maybe your attorney wants to say this. I believe your request is that we uphold your appeal to allow the Howard Creek Ranch Inn to retain its 40501 North Highway 1 address, however, allow the renaming otherwise than parcels on which were previously Seaview Drive to be re-designated as Lincoln Ridge Road. I believe that's, just for clarification, I believe that's your request.
Yes. And our attorney has a few words, too.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Brian Momson. I'm a local attorney. I represent Sonny and Sally Grigg. Just to clarify, Supervisor Judy, I wanted to bring that up because we were clear, I helped them write the appeal, that we're not challenging the name of the street. The staff report said if you uphold the appeal, the street, Lincoln Ridge Drive, that name couldn't be used. That's not what our appeal asked for. We just asked to keep their Highway 1 address. I think there's a simple way around this problem, just by looking at the language of the code section itself, which has been seen on County Code 1816060. Is there a way you can pull up that PowerPoint again for me? I think the fifth slide in was the one I wanted to look at.
Sure, that might just.
I'll keep talking while I do that, but the language of the statute says that numbers may only be assigned to the last officially named road or street traveled to access the subject property. I want to focus on the words "subject property." Well, on my printout, it was the fifth. That'll work. So if you look at that photo, the Lincoln Ridge Road is the southerlymost dirt road. It's important to note that all these roads are easements and private, and that this ranch is 60 acres, and it extends south of Lincoln Ridge. So the Grigg's Ranch extends beyond Lincoln Ridge, and more importantly, as soon as they exit Highway 1, they are on their property. So the last named official road to get to the property is Highway 1. And this is a unique circumstance. I don't think you're setting any precedence that would be harmful in the future by just giving them that address name. The other properties are way up this ridge, 17 miles long. The staff report and the presentation today said, well, the the inn doesn't have direct access to Highway 1. That's not what the code says. It doesn't say the structure or the dwelling or the business on the property has to have access to Highway 1. It's the last road to get to the property, which Highway 1 does that. So if you disinterpret it that way, they they are following the letter of this code, and there shouldn't even be a need for an exception, and then they can just keep their Highway 1 address, and the road can be renamed. If you go to the slide before that, I think it was the the fourth inn, it's the one that showed how far this Lincoln Ridge went back. On mine, it was, if you go to the beginning.
Is this the one?
Yes. So the whole point of this road name change was for public safety. There were two roads named Seaview. Look at this. I mean, they're, they are a coastal inn that is on the coast, they're north of this road. You're, by naming, putting their address on this road, it goes back miles inland up a steep ridge. It's windy. I don't know how easy it is to turn around, but people are coming from out of town. This is a recipe for confusion, and people will drive up this road and and likely get lost. The fire department, the local MAC, everyone's for this. It's kind of a technicality, perhaps, how the statute is written, but I think there's even a legitimate argument around that. Like I said, Highway 1 is the last, the last road they, to get to their property, which is, which is large. I want to leave a little time for Sonny, if there's any time left.
I would just, I would just, I would just say that the whole reason for this process to rename the road had to do with emergency vehicles and safety, and having our name, address be Lincoln Ridge, it's inevitable that people will go up that that ridge thinking that we're somewhere up that ridge, and in the, in the wrong circumstances, may not be able to turn around or may have an accident and actually may kill themselves. So that's, so that doesn't seem like a safe scenario to me, and it seems anti-productive to the intentions of, of, of the planning commission.
Okay, so our time is used up. Any questions for the applicants before we leave?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
Was your address, the 40501, did you make that up, or was it issued by the county?
Would you please step to the mic, or we can't hear you.
It was issued by the county when we got rezoned in 1978.
So since 78, you've been using a county-issued address.
Correct.
For our property that abuts at North Highway 1.
Correct.
Thank you.
Also, there's a symmetry. The Union Landing State Park is 40500, and they're a, they're a visitor-serving facility, and our address is across the street, 40501, and their access is exactly a mirror to ours. All the roads line up, and we're both visitor-serving facilities, and we happen to be a resort.
Okay, well, with that.
Chair.
Time. Sure, go ahead.
One of the points that was brought up was that, and it wasn't an option, it didn't seem that the staff presented was changing it to Lincoln Ridge Road and keeping this address or adding a dual address. Is that an option in your point of view?
I think ultimately, we'll defer to council on that. You know, staff is trying to impose the address ordinance the way that it's written within those existing boundaries, so that is not an option for staff. Theoretically, it's an option for the board if they wanted to do that. Keeping that address would be a little bit at odds with the addressing ordinance, so I would defer to council.
Counsel, is that a possibility?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski on this. So the, the language is, and I think it's been interpreted as, that last officially-named road or street traveled would be the road that comes off of Highway 1, and not that there's this dual private easement slash private road for that property directly abutting it. That's how staff has looked at how this road would be. I think the staff report and the presentation made the statement that it probably should have been a Seaview address the entire time, since Seaview is named. Seaview is what you would note coming off that highway, as terms of where it probably should have been, but whatever it was assigned in 1978 was assigned at that point in time. I'm not sure that it's impossible to work with Mr. Momson's interpretation, but I do think it'll cause some confusion down the line in terms of what the ordinance says and how many different addresses could go to a single parcel. So I think there is the option of denying the appeal or upholding the appeal in part. I guess my first thought was, also, most of the comments have been against Lincoln Ridge Road and the name change. I saw plenty of those in comments that were presented for today's meeting or for the address coordinator. So I think that was one reason why staff looked at this as being, if you want, yes, road name, no road name. The board wants to stick with, keep Lincoln Ridge Road and give direction to staff to either interpret the ordinance in one way for now or come back with an ordinance amendment in the future to make it more clear what the options are for these parcels that have no direct, inherent direct access from that county or state, county road or state highway, but still abut that county or state highway.
Hey, we're, we're a little bit off script. We're supposed to ask for public comment, but if it's a pleasure the board wish, wants to continue with our discussion with board. Sure, okay. All right, Supervisor Williams?
My entire life, they've had an address issued by the county. They haven't changed where their parcel's located. Highway 1 hasn't moved. I don't understand why this is even before us, and this is no criticism of staff. You're following code. We gave you bad code. But I think, I mean, the obvious is, in this situation, the code is wrong. It's not, it's not the property owner that's wrong. You don't go changing their address after 45 years of complying with a county-issued address. It reminds me of when we've spent a day trying to ban cannabis where it's already banned, and it highlights, we need to look at everything that's in the queue and sort of pick and choose and reprioritize. Because, I mean, on its face, the public looking at this, it's absurd. These poor people, if you had the same address for 45 years, now they have to hire an attorney because we're trying to change the address on them? You know, I feel like we owe them an apology. So I'm going to look at Fourth District Supervisor for the motion, and I'll support him. But I don't want to be boxed in. I think we need to be able to tell them, they keep their address the way it is, and continue renaming the road where there aren't objections.
Yeah. Well, if, if the chair would like to call for final public comment, I'd like to make a motion following that.
Okay. Oh, is there any public comment in the room? Is there any online?
Seeing no further public comment, I'd like to move to approve the appeal in that the Howard Creek Ranch property would retain its street address of 40501 North Highway 1, and the remaining parcels would be renamed Lincoln Ridge Road as originally recommended by county staff. Further, I'd like to request, necessarily urgent priority, but that the planning department, as time allows, would bring back a process that would allow staff to make adjustments so that properties that are, that are, that are abutting an existing road have an existing street address, i.e., whether it's a state highway, et cetera, have an exception process by which staff could approve an exception without requiring an appeal process. But again, it wouldn't be a high urgency. I know planning department has a lot of other issues at hand, but, so that this kind of process could be approved administratively by staff.
Second, and I, and I would like to add, for staff, as you find these kind of problems where you look at it and you realize this probably wasn't the intended effect of, of the code, if you could bring it to the board early, before it gets to an appeal, before there's, you know, attorneys involved and people driving across the county, and just say, we have, this is the code, we have to follow it, but, you know, maybe the board should reconsider because look at the problem it's creating. This just strikes me as an obvious one. Somebody who has a property that touches Highway 1 issued an address 45 years ago, you couldn't find somebody out of our 90,000 population that would think it's a good idea to force them to have a new address. So I, I would rather that come to the board to say, hey, your, your code is wrong, and you should fix this. Staff, I understand, has no way to do it. You've got to follow what's in the book. It's just what's in the book is, is wrong, in a lot of cases, it seems.
So I'd like to weigh in a little bit as also having lived through address changes. For many, many years, the road between Hopland and Ukiah was named River Road, and for some reason, this is many years ago, the, the county, I don't know if it was planning or, or roads, changed the name to Eastside Road, which got to be very confusing because there was an east road, there's Eastside Calpala Road, and Eastside Road between Hopland and Ukiah. So the community got together and changed the name to Old River Road, which was something that was, first of all, ended a lot of confusion, but also gave it its distinct identity so that there wasn't problems. I'm curious, did you reach out to the community at all when you decided to change the name of, of Seaview to Lincoln Ridge?
Russ Ford, Planning and Building. There were initial letters when this came in that were sent out to the, all the affected property owners, notifying them of the intent to adopt the name of the road and soliciting comment.
And, and what was the outcome of the comments? Did you find people in favor or against?
Generally, opposition. In most cases, any, any address change is met with opposition.
And, and I wondered if we couldn't have worked with something that sounds similar to, just like we went to Old River Road, if we could have had an old or, or county or some other name in front of Seaview to make a distinction that more or less kept the original address, but enough of a change that public safety people could tell the difference.
I would note that the, I don't recall any opposition specifically related to the name of the road, just the general process of having to, to change records and anything associated with the address change.
And also, the, the numbers were changed as well. What was the reasoning behind that? What was wrong with the old ones?
So actually, going back to a comment that the Grigg's made, so around 1980, my understanding is that the county hired a consultant to go through the assessor's parcel books and attempt to assign an address to every parcel in the county. For anybody that's not familiar with the assessor's parcel maps, that's a little bit of an exercise in futility because they're cadastral maps, they're just based on deed records, and they don't have any geographic information. So there are a lot of addresses that were assigned at that time, which would be incorrect based on today's addressing standards. I believe this is one of the ones that falls into that category. The road and the address names were, were kind of adopted at that same time, and so the correction in this case to the, the numbers for the roads was just bringing it up to date with the current addressing ordinance, using the current technology we have for it, the GIS mapping, and just realizing that the address, the existing address range that we had for Seaview Drive didn't fit if we were to approaching it as a new road. It would require a change in the address to make it more compatible with systems like the MSAG, which goes through the sheriff's office and the CalFire, Howard Forest. So any of the addresses that we assign get checked by our IT department to make sure they're compatible with the larger system, and so we have not just the county code to work with, but also those other systems for these automated dispatch.
So again, you followed process, but there's really not a lot of opportunity to, to meet with the public to discuss road changes, which are significant. I can tell you that when we discussed changing of Eastside Road to the Old River Road, we had a community meeting, which about 70 people attended. Not everybody was in favor, but a lot of people were because of the confusion. All of us had friends coming to visit that ended up in Calpala on, on one occasion or another, and I just, I think that the, when this, this is pretty, pretty significant change for somebody when they have not only a new road name, but also a new number. So I just, it's a comment that I, this process could be looked at, I think, a little bit. And as we discuss, you know, the, the nature of, of how we rename roads, that maybe we, this will also be included in, as something that we, you can give the board options for how we break the news to our constituents. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really sensitive to addresses. I have an address that USPS doesn't spell it the same way as the county, and in fact, the county has two, three signs up, and one of them has an extra L, right? That lack of consistency back, you know, 10 years ago might have been funny. Today, banks think I'm a financial risk because they can't verify my address. I can't get packages, right? I have FedEx regularly sending stuff back. It's, this is a multi-year. I don't even know where the glitch is, but I know how one digit off in an address can affect somebody in 2023. So, you know, so I'm looking at these people, besides they have a business based around this address, I imagine you change the address on them, and suddenly their mail won't show up some of the time. And having been through that, it's, nobody needs to be in that position.
Any further board discussion? Well, we have a motion on the floor, ready for the question.
Yes.
Supervisor Judy?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Supervisor Hachek?
Yes.
Chairman Gordy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And, and thank you to county staff. We realize that you're just, you know, you've got your constraints, you've, you've got this code that's not quite perfect, and things like this come up, and I agree with Supervisor Williams that, that we should, you know, probably try to flag some of these things when they come up and have a behind-the-scenes discussion to see if there's a way of, of having a, an exemption or, or other consideration.
It'd be cleaner if we could just all start over, frankly.
Yeah, it's a little late for that. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Interrupt the rules of order. Is there any possibility we could get our appeal financing back? We spent $2,600 because of this.
Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, well, I mean, this county's broke, but I, I actually feel you were wrong. So I'm going to look at fourth district supervisor for direction.
I would support refunding the appeal fee. You certainly incurred thousands of dollars of other costs that aren't affected by the fee, but yeah, I would support that if, so I would move to refund the, the appeal fee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Let's have a roll call vote, please. Oh, public comment first. Is there any comment in the room on refunding the fees? Anything online? There isn't, so we're ready to vote.
Chair McCarty?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern? Supervisor Jodi?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Supervisor Hesek?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we're scheduled for lunch. What's, what would you like to do?
So Chair, due to the off agenda item and the need for outside counsel, we kind of need that set for 3 o'clock. So at this point, we were going to take a, a short break and then come back and do the ordinance, and then go into closed, if that's okay.
Okay, when you say a short break, how many minutes?
I would look to, to you if you want 15 or 30.
Board members?
Well, are we having lunch? I mean, I'm trying to-
We will have lunch in closed session, yes.
Okay.
There's no chance of checking off 4E, the cannabis item?
Is that our last item?
Yes, that, that's the last item, separate supervisor report. So we were trying to take that item before closed, so I was hoping to, to do that before lunch.
I, I think that's okay. I think we can go with that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
May we just have a five-minute break before we tackle that item, please?
Yes, I think that'd be fine. See you back here at, let's make it quarter to 12.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a, as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Well, I was a new mom, and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a, a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, being, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do, and if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and being, everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first time mom. I felt like a first time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with, with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first time parents. It can be very isolating, and it can be, be very lonely, and having the home visitor changes that, and it feels very good. For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or, or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. And the fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
I think if I could go to someone who is going to be a mom next year, the first thing I would do is recommend the program. Because it gives you a lot of support and a lot of information.
We're live, and I'm calling the meeting back to order. And we're moving on to item 4E, which is discussion and possible action, including introduction and way first reading of an ordinance amending chapters 20.118 and 20.119 of the Menasino County Code to amend the procedures to establish or modify cannabis accommodation and commercial cannabis prohibition districts, and eliminate the listing of individual districts. County Council.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski. County Council's Office and Planning and Building Services have prepared ordinance amendments that would eliminate the ability for individuals to apply for either a cannabis accommodation or cannabis prohibition district. If adopted, if the ordinance is adopted, either district would need direction from either the Planning Commission or the Board to commence that process. Resonings of property have typically required the signature of all property owners affected by the rezoning. But in developing both the CA and CP district chapters, it allows for a single applicant with the showing of 60% support of the landowners. This system has caused confusion and controversy. There have been concerns about signature gathering and coercion, and desires for a specific review of signatures to determine their validity. There have been concerns that districts were gerrymandered in terms of their shape to ensure meeting the 60% threshold. And the review of these issues has caused a lot of work that has been borne by planning staff in terms of a review of these applications. That may not be a priority compared to other projects. The application process also puts into motion typical staff review of a project. There are referrals to agencies, staff report preparation, and sequel review. And this work is commenced without any initial review by the Board or Planning Commission like any other rezoning application would be. Given these issues, it is proposed that creation and amendment of these districts be commenced only by the Planning Commission or the Board. Persons and neighborhoods may still seek a CA or CP district, but must ask either the Planning Commission or the Board to initiate this process. And to be clear, these changes do not bar the creation of new CA or CP districts, or affect existing CA or CP districts. In making this change to eliminate the applications, there's some other changes being made as well. There's currently a 10-year period stated that would bar persons from applying to amend a district or repeal. That 10-year period never applied to the Board, so it's simply being removed from the code. Code sections relating to fees for applications are being eliminated because there will be no applications. And there are also two sections that list that adopted CA or CP zones that have not been maintained. They are not currently up to date. And as opposed to updating those lists as part of this action, and then maintaining those in the future to account for new or fewer CA or CP zones, we're just proposing to delete those sections. There doesn't have to be a section listing the existing CA or CP zones. But it does not undo the zoning, or the application of the CA or CP zoning overlay to those properties.
Please explain that again. I'm not quite following what you're saying.
So when you rezone property, there'd be specific notice persons that were going to change their zoning. These chapters had lists for convenience, so you can see in the section what areas had the CA or CP district applied to it. But we haven't maintained those lists, so they're already out of date. And the issue in keeping them updated is it just means maintaining the code and not forgetting to do it as part of any future action. So what we're proposing is just to delete those sections. It doesn't affect the zoning of the property. It just means you can't go to those, those sections wouldn't exist to tell you where those districts are. You can go to the zoning maps of the county, or ask county staff for that information. Those lists also didn't say exactly what properties they applied to, so it was also already imprecise in terms of knowing whether your property was covered by a CA or CP district.
So you're suggesting that there would just be a zoning overlay on a GIS?
Correct. The existing rezones say the same. The CP districts and CA districts are not affected by mixing this section. It just means staff doesn't have to continually make sure it's up to date with future changes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then as discussed in the agenda summary, the procedural nature of these amendments means they can be processed without going to the Planning Commission, given there's no substantive changes to these districts being proposed. And similarly, because they're procedural in nature, there's no further documentation required for sequel purposes. That's the end of my remarks. If there's any questions or comments, please let me know.
Supervisor Jody.
Yeah, so first question. I thought I understood that the accommodation district process did not currently exist.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, that's true, but we're just limiting it in the future to remove any confusion going forward. It was, that ended in 2019. As we prepared the changes to the CP districts, we figured it would just be cleaner to do it overall for both all CA and CP districts.
But if I understand this proposed ordinance, it's allowing a new era where new accommodation districts can't be proposed, when currently they're not allowed to be proposed.
So there's, but it's taking out any applications for a CA district or CP district whatsoever. So there's no new era. The Board could always, or the PC could always have gone back and said, "Let's think about rezoning to this kind of district." The wording in Section 030D was "Applications for CA combined districts will be accepted until November 1st, 2019." We're striking that because it's irrelevant. No applications will be considered at this point in time.
And then you talked about the ordinance is not being maintained in terms of lists of where they've been proposed, or what. It does seem to me that it's important for the county to maintain, whether it's on a map or otherwise, where they were proposed and rejected. Because, for example, I thought part of the concept of the ordinance, as imperfect as it might have been, when a proposed area was rejected, it wasn't going to keep coming back up. I mean, in my mind, there's a certain amount of trauma that neighborhoods have gone through. You know, and, you know, forgive me if I'm talking about something that's only relating to the fourth district at this point, but it could come to some other district. And that was, at the time that we were attempting to create this, again, imperfect ordinance, we were trying to create standardized, you know, standards throughout the county. And we understood that there were neighborhoods, communities within the county that had very high percentage of the public was cultivating commercially. And other neighborhoods, other communities, other neighborhoods where very few people were cultivating commercially. And so although we were trying to establish countywide standards, we wanted a process by which we could allow for the outlier community to propose something that was an exception to the county standard. And we had three areas, South Leggett, Covelo, and Leightonville, that proposed an exception to allow for commercial cannabis, where a substantial majority of the respondents, the property owner respondents, said yes, they wanted the commercial cannabis in spite of the fact that they were in smaller parcels, suburban or urban, suburban neighborhoods. And then we had two neighborhoods south of Fort Bragg that said no. Actually had a higher percentage of property owners responding. And the highest disproportionate vote by that committee was like, it was like nine to one against. And then later, we had an applicant after that rejection come back with a, what I would argue was a gerrymandered, smaller subset of those parcels, proposing it again. And I think each of those events could be accurately described as a trauma to that neighborhood that didn't want commercial cannabis. They overwhelmingly told us they didn't want it. And so I do think that we need to have some sort of record of where proposed areas have been proposed, and what was the record of support or opposition, what was the outcome of that. Because at some point in the future, who's to say that, you know, a future county supervisor representing some vocal members of their district, perhaps their campaign supporters, initiates a process for commercial cannabis in a residential neighborhood that doesn't really want it, but most people aren't paying attention if they don't know it's at stake in the election. And after the election, after that person's elected, this process moves forward. And it seems that at a minimum, the county should at least maintain records of where these proposed areas were proposed, and what was the outcome of that. And I would actually argue, the ordinance also talked about not having these votes come up over and over and over again. That there should be some timeout between a decision. So I also think if the community's already spoken and said, "We don't want commercial cannabis in our neighborhood," there should be some honoring of that by the county over at least some period of time. So I don't think that this thing should come back just because somebody gets elected supervisor and initiates a rezone after the community already said they didn't want it. Because who's to say that that issue was even put in play in the election? Who's to say the voters even knew that that was at stake? They certainly didn't know it before I was elected that that was going to be a possibility in those neighborhoods. And I tried to honor the views of the people once they had a chance to speak up. So I just feel like, one, we should maintain the records. Two, there shouldn't be a do-over, I would say at least in a 10-year period, for any area that's been proposed and rejected.
Supervisor Housejack, then Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, there's, I have a couple issues that need to be raised about this proposed ordinance. Is that I don't believe that the people should be taken out of the picture. I think that if people want to come together as a neighborhood and petition the supervisors, then that should happen. As far as the Planning Commission, you know, my understanding is that they never would initiate something like this. And so it would really just be, the onus would be on the supervisor to bring it forward if the people don't have that vote or ability to petition. I think that with that ability to petition, if an area like a neighborhood wants to opt out, I think that only the people who have the ability to cultivate at this moment should be allowed to vote or be part of that parcel. Because what's happening is, one, like, for example, in Redwood Valley, there were people who weren't allowed to cultivate because of their zoning, but they were trying to determine what would happen in ag land in that area. If the people in the ag land, or upland residential, or whatever, that are allowed to cultivate, want to come together and petition and say, "We don't want that in our neighborhood," that's fine. But you shouldn't have it skewed by people who don't even have that option voting on that. That shouldn't be part of the petition. And then the other part of it would be that if there's a parcel within that district that has applied for a permit, or anywhere in that permit process, they should be excluded from that opt-out consideration, because they've already, you know, started the process. For business, I think that that would give some continuity and some consistency, so they wouldn't all of a sudden have the rug pulled out of them while they've gone through this process. And so I just think, you know, have people vote, you know, have the parcels that can cultivate, have the ability to opt out. Anyone that's in the permit program would be excluded from that opt-out area. And I think that everyone, you know, people should be able to bring that petition forward, along with supervisors.
Supervisor Williams.
Well, anyone can petition at any time and give the results to their supervisor to bring to the Board. I don't like this model where, I mean, let's take cannabis out of it, just talk about it in the abstract. I buy a house in Glenn's neighborhood. I round up all the residents who outnumber grape growers, and we petition for the county to put an overlay where he can't grow grapes. You have noise coming out of it, you have light pollution when you harvest. I imagine you're spraying and you're using a lot of water. We're going to outlaw your grape production, right? If you're looking out for property rights, you look out for property rights always. And we're setting up this dynamic where we have neighbors against neighbors. Rather than dealing with the actual problem, that cannabis grows can be a nuisance. And we should address the nuisance, because that's a property rights issue also for the existing neighborhood. But this blanket approach of, if you can get enough people to sign a petition, you outlaw some other people in your neighborhood, I don't think it's good public policy. Last, we see federal rescheduling is coming. Everything we do on cannabis now will probably be thrown away, right? In 21, finally got to me in 2021, we had cannabis on the agenda 21 times. We spent more time on cannabis than anything else, and it's still going. We're still doing it. And so I support the staff recommendation. I support MCA's enhancements to it. I think their contribution makes it even better. And revisit the problems in the future to address nuisance as they arise.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Thank you. I do realize that some people saw this item as a surprise. I would hope that none of my colleagues see it as a surprise. This board is under a fiscal crisis. And one of the discussions that we've had on the last two cannabis prohibition districts was about the budget, and about the money that has been being spent through the use of planning and building and county council, when those resources could be used otherwise to hopefully create more housing, create more jobs. There's a lot of things that we need these departments to be working on, other than reinventing the wheel for specific neighborhoods. So I understand that the intention of the Board while they were creating the ordinance may have been to try to better understand which neighborhoods did or did not want cannabis cultivation in their neighborhoods. However, we've moved beyond that, to where we have a countywide ordinance. And when I saw this item coming forward, I was simply thinking, this is about saving taxpayers' time and money, and steering planning and building and county council to be able to work in the direction of other benefits to the community, rather than specific neighborhoods and their issues regarding cannabis. As Supervisor Williams said, you know, there are other ways to abate nuisance issues related to cannabis. And I just, I see this as if you're a neighborhood that needs support from your supervisor to bring an item forward, then your supervisor would be able to provide you that through other means. And that we don't need for our community members to have to go through this process and expend the dollars on their own as well, because there is a cost.
Supervisor Jody.
So I have a question for the Board. There's only one neighborhood in Menasino County where cannabis was not, commercially grown cannabis was not going to be allowed because of the zoning. It was our two acre parcels. And only one neighborhood where it wasn't going to be allowed, but then was considered for an exception by the county, and then later, through a process the county created by an applicant. And no other neighborhood in Menasino County has gone through this process of where it was proposed, where it wasn't otherwise allowed, and was rejected. So I guess what I'm asking the Board is if it's really just this one neighborhood that's gone through that process of being considered and rejected. Everywhere else it was considered, it was supported. Supported by the neighbors, and supported by the county, South Leggett, downtown Leightonville, Covelo. The only neighborhood where the results were exactly the opposite was in the Mitchell Creek-Simpson Lane neighborhood. Can we just agree, if we're going to adopt this ordinance, since it only affects the one neighborhood, that if a neighborhood has been considered and rejected, and in this case, it's been rejected twice by the neighbors and by the Board, that it can't come back up for reconsideration for at least 10 years? Can we just agree on that?
Supervisor Williams.
So I wouldn't personally bring it up. I don't even think I would support it. I know how that neighborhood feels. But I think when your term as a supervisor ends, and somebody else is seated in your place, you can't strip them of the ability to legislate. That's just, I mean, otherwise, imagine if every decision we made, we said, "We're going to decide for future boards 10 or 20 years out." We would come to a grinding halt. I mean, I could think of a lot of things that I would like for the next 50 years to not happen in this county. But it's really, it's not fair for the democratic process, when the people elect the next person, that they have no ability to make decisions because of decisions of a previous board.
Well, I'm also just looking at the time of staff time that would be required to bring it up for consideration. It would be a colossal waste of time.
Totally agree, but I think it's on that next board. It's not on the current board to decide what they prioritize. When I'm gone, the person that sits in my seat will be free to advocate for the constituents at the time they're in office. I can't decide for them today. I just, I think in the abstract, it's kind of, I don't want to say ridiculous, but it's not the process of government that we're deciding for a future generation what their zoning should be.
Supervisor Housejack.
Well, I think that this was brought up, and people didn't know about it. MACs haven't had any kind of input on it, because they just, you know, we just saw this on Thursday. And so the communities don't know what's going on with this. I think that taking the ability of people to petition for this kind of opt-out or opt-in is, taking it away from the people is not the right way to go. I really think that there needs to be that hybrid approach where people can petition still, or a supervisor can bring it up. And I think that, you know, if we deal with the gerrymandering issue, it will be obvious if, you know, if we keep it within that, what I talked about before, about you have to be able to cultivate in your land if you're going to opt out. And also, you know, excluding any parcels that are in the process of application. So, and I think that, you know, the 10-year approach should be kept. Because I don't think that communities need to go through this repeatedly. So that would be my motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so I'll weigh in a little bit. I, you know, can see the point of a few things here. One is that I agree with Supervisor Housejack that the right to petition is in our constitution, basically. It's that the public can, you know, democratically approach their government for things that they want. The second thing that I recognize too is that gerrymandered situations are really bad, of where the majority of people inside of their own neighborhood, okay, fine. But when you start stretching out to property where things are zoned for that particular activity, that tends to stretch what's fair. And that concerns me quite a bit. And I think we've been through this now two times recently, and the outcomes have both been, you know, negative for the petitioner. So I also appreciate the amount of staff time that goes into this. And the question is, are there other things that we should worry about? However, having cannabis is really impactful. And here's a little factoid for you. Over the weekend, I met someone from Santa Barbara. And she told me that most of the provisional permits are going to be canceled in Santa Barbara, because they're going to require that everybody who grows cannabis has basically a closed system where they remove the odor from the grow. So that's going to be very, very difficult for a lot of people to comply with. That's the nuisance part, which we talked about and tried to address when we were dealing with Redwood Valley. So those are just a few thoughts of mine that I have on this. And, you know, I think a hybrid system where we're either, what I'd like to see is that people inside of a district petition their supervisor to move it forward, and that it not be a direct right to the Planning Department. I think that that way, we would address, yes, you can petition, but by the same token, it's not taking a Planning Department time automatically without, unless they have the, pretty much the guidance of the supervisor. You know, I mean, that's kind of a twist on it. And I have no idea if any of this is legal, but that's what I would do, to allow people to petition for cannabis opt-out or opt-in zones, but then put the onus on the supervisor to move it forward when it comes to the ordinance development. Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, Chair, I could support you on that. One of the recent, not the last one, but the one in Redwood Valley, I heard a number of complaints. I talked to three witnesses who were told that they were approached for signatures, and they didn't, they weren't comfortable signing it. They were Latino. They felt ambushed. They would get home, and there would be somebody waiting around a tree to try to get their signature. They ended up signing, and then regretted it, said it didn't match their values. But they were tired of being ambushed for the signature. Two told me that they were asked for money, that in order to quote-unquote "vote" in this petition, they also had to pay up. And so I think we have a process. It's setting us up for conflicts that should never exist. If there's a petition, either it should be to the supervisor, or if the county government is running the petition, it needs to be a fair and defined process. It can't be left up to a community to gerrymander boundaries and pressure people to sign. And I think that's what we've witnessed. And so my issue is not a community deciding it doesn't want cannabis. A community decides, you know, that they don't want cannabis in their area. I can support that. But I don't think we have a fair process today. I can support that, but I don't think we have a fair process today.
So we have a motion on the, whoa, county council.
Deputy County Council Matthew Giedrowski. If I could respond to a couple of comments and questions that were posed, I'd appreciate it. In going back to Supervisor Jordy's comments, at the outset, all the code sections currently did was list the existing districts. There was never a public listing of what was rejected. I think planning and building can speak to how they keep records about the rezonings. So there's definitely record knowledge of what happens there and institutional knowledge, the longer our planners stay around, who've seen these things come and go. In terms of the 10-year prohibition on even a board-directed item, I do think that would be essentially, it wouldn't have any effect because already we didn't have that. There was a 10-year provision that only applied to applications and that was based on a theory that one current board really can't direct a future board on what to do. In any event, the future board could always amend that if they wanted to change it at that point in time. So there really isn't a, it isn't effective to try and say, we're going to try, those future boards shouldn't do those things because the future boards can take that action. So that's why we're just stripping it out and it was never in place for a board or PC-directed amendment as it stands. I can stop there.
Supervisor Jordy.
Yeah, I could follow up on that. So can I toss out a different idea? What I'm talking about is where a proposal to create a new activity that's not currently allowed, which in this, in this instance, it's commercial cannabis growing in a residential neighborhood where it's not otherwise allowed in that zoning district. So I'm not talking about the opt-outs, I'm talking about the opt-ins. In my opinion, if it's already been rejected through the process that we've had, and in this, the one example where it's been rejected, it's been rejected in two different ways, two different times in the same neighborhood, that if, if it, if it's not possible to have an ordinance that says it can't be reconsidered within 10 years, although I do think it could, I certainly think, just as in the budget, to change the budget, to pull money out of reserves within the budget year, I believe it takes a four-fifths vote. Why not at least put the marker down and say, the board at any time can reconsider and allow commercial cannabis in a neighborhood where it's already been rejected, but to proceed with that process, it's going to take a four-fifths vote to go down that road? Why not say that? Again, it's only one neighborhood in the whole county where it's been rejected, it's not been directed once, it's rejected twice. Why not say it takes a four-fifths vote to bring it up a third time within a 10-year period?
Supervisor Williams.
I feel like that's just weird, Dan. You can't start deciding if future boards are subject to a four-fifths vote on an item that requires majority of zoning. I don't, I think the, I mean, if the concern is that another supervisor in, in, sitting in fourth district seat will propose a cannabis zone, well, I mean, that's a democratic process between the people and that supervisor and they should be asking that question now. I certainly wouldn't propose it. I'm not proposing, you know, commercial cannabis grows in Mitchell Creek. I don't think any of the rest of the board here is going to propose that. That's a District Four issue. But the process in District Four is the people ask questions, they, they elect a supervisor and it's up to that supervisor whether or not to put it on the agenda. And then, you know, there are people will show up on both sides. This is just the normal process. I don't think you can decide as you go out that you're going to add additional hurdles to whoever's in your seat in the future.
Well, the process was already shut as far as, I think, the public was concerned. So the fact that we aren't getting at least three supervisors saying, as far as they're concerned, the process is shut, is, is going to create doubt in the minds of the public.
Well, they may be able to say that, but a different board, we can't hold another board to it. We don't know what will be happening in the year 2030. Maybe they decide to have cannabis everywhere, maybe they decide to have it nowhere. But I think what we get to decide is today, how zoning works. And nobody's proposing a Mitchell Creek grow. I don't even know why you would do it, such small, small parcels. Like, how would it be economically viable? And that community's already explained they don't want it. So I don't hear anybody here saying, let's, let's change zoning to allow growing in Mitchell Creek. I hear Supervisor Mulhern saying, this has been a colossal waste of money, the amount of staff time that's gone into proposals that ultimately get shot down, not, not, not good public policy for a county that's bordering on bankruptcy. Let's have the petition come to the supervisor and if the supervisor thinks there's enough merit, enough interest, then go through the process. I can support that. You know, if you have 100 parcels and they all say, we don't want cannabis ever grown here, yeah, let's, let's, let's give them that zoning. But let's not have them spend our staff time without our consent for two years, putting plans together in public hearings and so when it finally gets to us, we say no. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote against this motion. The motion I would support is the supervisor, the Chair McGordy petition your supervisor, otherwise keep a staff proposal as is incorporating the MCA recommendations.
Supervisor Hausjack.
Yeah, the, the issue of whether, you know, people have the right to petition or the supervisor chooses, you know, I agree with Supervisor McGordy, is that, you know, the best way would be for it to go through the supervisor. You know, that the people from that community should go through the supervisor. And if they did a petition and went on their own without the supervisor's approval, then they would be incurring the cost for, you know, the filing fees and everything for this. And it would be a long, hard process. It wouldn't probably be the smartest or most, most effective way of proceeding. But if people want to do that and they don't have a supervisor who's in agreement, they should be able to take it to the board. And, you know, that's the way the democratic process works. And so, so I, I think that it can be both ways, but certainly, you know, the supervisor way would be the most effective.
So would you, okay, so, but you wanted another avenue, which is direct to the, the planning department, correct? Where they could just petition to the planning department if the supervisor doesn't support it? So if, for instance, they go to Supervisor Mulhern and she says, I don't think this is a good idea, I'm not going to support it, then they could go directly to the planning department? Is that what you're thinking?
Right, yeah. But there would be restrictions for some of those issues that have popped up, like the gerrymandering and, you know, the grandfathering in, you know, people in the process. So, so we'll eliminate some of those problems. As far as, you know, intimidation or anything like that, anytime you have a petition process or you have initiatives or you have people signing petitions, you have some level of things going on, but that is also the democratic process, unfortunately, in some cases.
I, I think that's the democratic process in places like Russia. And that's what I'm trying to move away from here. If we're going to have people voting, I want it to be a fair process.
Well, certainly, we're, we're not talking about Russia here. We're talking about how we get signatures. And if people go to their, you know, neighbor and ask for a signature and they're intimidating or paying off or charging or anything like that, then everyone should know about that.
Well, we did know about it.
But that's not the process we should be promoting.
We knew about it this last cycle and we found ourselves helpless. What can we do about it? Supervisors have no say, it doesn't seem staff has any say. We're leaving it to the public to draw the map and they're drawing the map as they're collecting signatures, building a little here, building a little there, removing these people who won't sign the way they want. I mean, a court should look at this process. I see this horrific, you're letting, you're having communities gerrymander maps to outlaw, to outlaw what they can't even do on their own parcel, on a neighboring parcel?
Well, that's what we're trying to get rid of in this process.
What, what is it that we fear here? What, what problem are we really trying to solve?
Well, we're trying to abate nuisance in neighborhoods.
But we're, the only tool we can think of is to have communities collect signatures to outlaw other people from cultivating cannabis. Are there any other tools at our disposal? I mean, when we, when we assigned code enforcement, they were effective. What was that, three or four weeks and they, half the parcels in an area that wanted an overlay? Are there other tools to address the, and abate nuisance? Rather than ban cannabis in whole neighborhoods, you know, you know, what I would propose is you, you, maybe you get, you get one strike. Code enforcement shows up, says you have odor coming out, you know, environmental destruction, clean it up. If they have to go out again and they find that it's sustained, pull the permit, right? Then at least it's surgical. It's based on merit, it's based on the actor and it's encouraging people to be good actors. What we have today is encouraging people to team up against their neighbors.
Code enforcement or the legal counsel, would you like to weigh in on this or should say planning building services?
Oh, well, so I think the board is already aware of the directed enforcement that we did in Redwood Valley, which I think was actually a rather successful endeavor that happened. Now, we do still respond to any community complaints. I, it did sound like when talking about odor, we might be talking about folks that are in the permitting process or in the program, which is a bit different than when we're responding to those that are not in the program. So, you know, in terms of the ordinance here, I think we, we had heard from some of the past discussions about the board having a desire to direct more so where staff resources are spent. And that was the reason for coming forward with this proposal. We're happy to take direction from the board on how you would like to proceed or if you would like for staff to revise, but I think we do need to hear some consensus amongst the board members to know really what, what we would be redrafting. And I do believe there's still a few questions that were discussed by board members that we might be able to provide some helpful clarification on as well.
Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, I mean, rephrase. I think we're, this board is generalizing. We tell kids, don't, you know, don't, don't generalize, look at the specifics. And what we're doing is generalizing whole neighborhoods as either cannabis is appropriated or it's not. What we need to do is encourage good cultivation, cultivation that doesn't cause negative effects, it's not a nuisance. And that's not an outright zoning ban in areas. That's best practices that should be enforced throughout.
Well, the question is, when you have an activity that has external impacts and you have smaller parcels, those external impacts then impact the adjoining parcels. A former professor at Humboldt State recently passed away and I remember one of his famous comments, I don't think it was original, which was, my, my freedom to extend my arm forward ends where it reaches your nose. And I think that's where, what the public has repeatedly told this board and other boards is that certain activities, and, and commercial cannabis is one of them, where there are external odor issues that can drift off of site, do in fact, in the perception and beliefs of our community, have impacts on adjoining neighbors. And when you, when you consider allowing commercial cannabis on two-acre parcels, parcels less than two acres in size, the perceptions of the neighborhood is that it's definitely going to have an impact, a negative impact on their property values and their quality of life. Not everybody want, I mean, in the Mitchell Creek neighborhood, they were told by the county hired consultants, well, a community member who didn't want commercial cannabis was told, well, you know, maybe you should look at the bright side. Maybe your property values might go up if commercial cannabis is allowed in your neighborhood. Well, that community member said, well, I don't want to sell my property, I want to live here. So why would, all you're telling me is I'm going to lose my quality of life for this theoretical increased value in property values. So it wasn't, you know, message heard, message not appreciated by the community, by that, from that county hired consultant.
So Supervisor Jordy, I agree with you. Where the odor is crossing a proper line, property line and negatively impacting somebody, that is our job to regulate. We, we agree on that. But I don't think all cannabis has odor that's crossing property lines. And, you know, as we see in Santa Barbara, there's, there's regulation about that odor not crossing, it has to be contained. And so if they're able to contain it, I don't have an issue with it. If they can't contain it, I don't care if it's two acres or 10 acres. The exception for me would be ag land. We have right to farm ordinance. Ag land, you expect agricultural operations to have some odor, to have some visual impact, to have some, some noise, to use water. And, you know, I think we're eroding the right to farm by saying on ag land, especially large ag parcels, you can't grow cannabis, you can grow anything else, but you can't grow cannabis. Well, there's a lot of other crops that would have negative impacts as well, but we've decided that that's the appropriate place for farming activities. And I see that's one of MCM's, MCA's recommendations. I think they're right. I don't think we should be outlawing cultivation on ag-zoned parcels.
Supervisor Hausjack.
Well, for me, it boils down to, do people have the right to, to determine what goes on in their community, in their neighborhood? And that's the bottom line. And if we're, you know, we're taking it away and we're putting it in the hands of each and every one of us, that's not really right. I mean, we should, for streamlining purposes, that should be an option. But I think that people should have the right to petition. And, you know, the problems we've had with this whole process is, you know, some of these things that with the motion that's on the table would be taken care of, I think.
My last comment.
Sure, go ahead Supervisor Williams.
So, John, imagine if the people in, in Booneville petition to institute an overlay to stop commercial grape growing. The grape growers would say, it's already there, they've been doing it. And we would say, no, but the people have a right. If enough people can get together and sign, they don't grow grapes themselves, they just have a residence, but if enough of them get together and sign a petition, we're going to outlaw an existing farming activity. What would you say?
Well, according to what I proposed, is that, that, those people who are already growing grapes, that would be fine. They would have the right to keep growing grapes. It's just that commercial cultivation of cannabis would be, you know, if you haven't, you don't have a permit, you haven't started it, then that community, that neighborhood should be able to say, we don't want that in this neighborhood.
So go, but come back though on the grapes. So you would say the existing grape growers can continue, but no more grape growing? So isn't that a taking of the people who own parcels that are appropriate for grape growing, zoned for grape growing, suddenly they can't grape grow? What are they to do with those parcels? How is that not a government taking?
If, if a person is allowed to, well, we're not talking about grapes right now, we're talking about the cannabis program.
Well, I'm talking about public policy and I'm trying to abstract it, that pick something else, thrift stores, grocery stores, gas stations, whatever, right? Are you going to have tyranny by the majority? If you can get enough neighbors together, you can, you can change zoning and ban practices your other, your other neighbors want to engage in, even where they have a vested interest, they've already started. They have the right zoning, they bought it for that zoning, they've developed the site and they get undermined. Is that what, because we're, when we talk economic development in Mendocino County, business needs consistency. They need to know when they buy a parcel, what the rules are. And I understand from time to time, there's going to be changes in zoning, but it can't be at the whim of the board and, you know, public petition to just flip-flop. Why would you want to do business in our county? Any business. I'm not talking about just cannabis.
Well, what this proposes is that that would happen. It would just take it away from the people, but the supervisors could still do that. So why are we doing that? Why are we taking it away from neighborhoods to decide how they want to have their own neighborhood? That's what I'm asking.
I, I, I think the vote here is for property rights. And I think we're going down a slippery slope where we start eroding property rights with, through petitions.
Well, I, I see property rights on both sides. The, the right to do what you want and the right not to be impacted. You know, you buy in a certain neighborhood and with certain expectations and, and I know people don't want things to change. That's why they, they buy where they do and they're hoping to, to, you know, finish out their years with things not being really different from when they first moved there. I see that in Redwood Valley on Road B. I've had that comment to me from people who said, we bought this place 30 years ago thinking we'd retire out and suddenly we've got big trucks going up and down the road and we have all sorts of things going on we never anticipated.
If you don't want things to change, we should bring back the 9,000 illegal cannabis farms that have been here for the last 30 years.
Supervisor Mulhern.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Is there anybody who wishes to comment on this item? It's you, Michael.
There is public.
Sure, the supervisors, county staff, Michael Katz, Executive Director for the Mendocino Cannabis Alliance. Very interesting conversation, really appreciate it. Couple of things just globally to remember, that the citizens of the state of California and the citizens of Mendocino County did vote to legalize cannabis in the state of California. So the democratic process that we're talking about wanting to honor already also happened. And the county of Mendocino voted in the majority to adopt Prop 64, which would legalize and regulate cannabis cultivation. Additionally, I appreciate Supervisor Williams' comment about parity with agriculture in general. When we talk about these prohibitions, which is literally, I mean, prohibition is in the name of the zone, if they're just for cannabis, one day, as we all know, most likely, cannabis as a plant will be designated as such and become an agricultural crop or activity the same way hemp is, the same way all other crops that are farmed are. And so what is happening right now is just because of this federal designation that is already in conversation, we're allowing a disproportionate amount of power over these disadvantaged small business people just because of stigma. disadvantaged small business people, just because of stigma. Because there's nothing in these revisions that identify any protocol or any findings that would justify the implementation of these types of prohibition zones, other than just people don't like it. And especially if you're in ag zoning, as Supervisor Williams said, those are zones that are designed for agricultural uses and are going to have impacts. I support Supervisor Haskett's comments that people who are in zoning that can't cultivate should not be able to negatively impact people who can, but absolutely believe that ag zoning should be taken completely off the table as far as these zones go, that's where cultivation of crops goes. And then, you know, as far as the other recommendations that MCA made, the accommodation zones, those have not existed since 2019. If there's a group of adjoining parcels that want to create better infrastructure for them, why is that prohibited while prohibition is allowed? So whatever changes happen to this, we would want to make it so that people are able to say, "Hey, we would like to implement these type of zones, we would like to remove the ag zoning, and we would want to make sure that anybody operating is still able to continue to operate." And I would say that globally, obviously, we think that these are bad ideas, like having a prohibition zone in any format that could potentially shut down businesses that operate, sends a terrible signal to existing businesses and future businesses about doing business here in Mendocino County. And to Supervisor McGordy's comment about people not wanting things to change, there's been cannabis here way longer than this ordinance. And people who moved to Mendocino County 30 years ago knew really well that cannabis was a huge part of the economy. And so as we are moving into a more responsible and regulated environment, where we've seen thousands and thousands of cannabis growers no longer operate in Mendocino County, and that's kind of the direction things are heading, we want to protect those people who are trying to do things the right way. So please remove the ability for neighbors to stop their neighbors from cultivating cannabis, especially in ag zoning, and please re-enable the accommodation zones. Thank you very much.
There's no one else in the room, but we do have people online, so Paul Hansberry.
Yes, this is Paul Hansberry from Lovingly and Legally. I'd like to echo the sentiments of MCA and Michael Katz, that the inclusion of the accommodation zones, I think just even from a legal aspect should be considered and allowed, reestablished. The sunsetting of that was questionable, at least in my mind, for quite a while. Also, the accommodation zones should be not just for a group of parcels, but also there should be, that should be a mechanism, in my opinion, for an exception in the cases of other areas, not just residential areas, but other areas that, where it's not allowed, to create an overlay and an exception if you have the support of the neighboring people, the neighborhood, you know, noticing. Sort of like a discretionary review by the Planning Commission to see if it's acceptable, whether it's allowed by the general plan or by the ordinance, that if it's, if you can petition to the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors to allow the cultivation as long as it's not going to be a nuisance, especially if it's allowed, for instance, if there's a rangeland parcel, perhaps that it would be acceptable in that particular case, so that they could make that exception. And I think that that would be a valuable tool for people that want to do things the right way. I think that incentivizing people to get into the legal market is something that's been overlooked in Mendocino County for a very long time. So thank you very much for your consideration to this, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Michael Strop.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi, thank you. I wanted to say, you know, we have a really good ordinance here in Mendocino County. There is no such thing as large-scale legal cultivation, licensed cultivation. They're talking about Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara has acres and acres and acres, just single permits of 60, 80 acres. Yeah, those things make nuisances. And in Mendocino County, we're not allowed to have more than 10,000 square feet of cultivation, which is under a quarter of an acre. You know, the state has a bunch of laws and regulations that are clear and rigorous already of what you can do even in order to be a cannabis farm. There's no reason for this county to try and make it even harder. The people that are left here in the county are a bunch of really good actors, we're winning awards, we are trying our best, we've been really pushed out, we're barely surviving, you know. We, our county should be helping support these people that we have in our county, and, you know, help us have businesses that can come and pay taxes. I know our county's not doing really well. Why is the county working against us? You know, it's really weird that everyone seems to really operate out of fear. I hear, you know, Supervisor Jordy from the 4th District keep talking about how, how much trauma was done and everything. It's like, there was six people in Mitchell Creek that were trying to continue to cultivate, and I tried to get him out to my cultivation numerous times, and he would not come and see it. He said, "I can't come see it because I've already made up my position." And like, "Well, why don't you see what you're voting against?" You know, like, we, yes, I agree, if there's, all the people were just flying a bunch of false flags about, "Oh, this is going to be a problem, there's going to be chimeras robbing up and down the roads, it's going to smell, it's going to do this." They were giving people three miles away a say on whether we should be able to cultivate there, continue to cultivate there or not, when the people that were actually right next to me, I'm really good friends with, they love us, they wish we could continue to cultivate there, there was no nuisance. We had a very tiny indoor operation that didn't smell. We were the best neighbors they ever had. They said, "You guys come in at nine and you leave at five." I wish I had neighbors that weren't loud, that were just super respectful, this is the best thing ever. So I'm in full support of not letting the people make these decisions, because if you let the people make the decisions, they find all these crazy reasons of why, why things shouldn't happen, you know. Look at half the United States probably thinks that the border, we need a border wall because all these immigrants are causing all of our problems, when it's not the case, you know. So there's all these, all this misinformation out there, and to let the people make these decisions, when we went and built our cultivation there, then we were told, "Hey, there's going to be a way that you guys can potentially keep going past this sunset." And it was really not a way, because the consultants had a ton of money spent on them, they bungled it, they asked neighbors from super far away, "Hey, do you want this?" Of course they're going to say no, and there should be a way to look at it on an individual basis. So I think we need to stop operating out of fear, and I need, I think we need to trust the process that's already there, and, and if there is problems, then let's deal with it if there's problems. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have David A. Hi, David, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, this process has really been poisoned from the beginning, from the inception of the idea for 2019. It was poorly conceived by previous board, it was too open to being manipulated by prejudice, stereotypes, and myths, was badly structured by incompetent consultants. And, you know, we're, and then it starts at the Planning Commission level, and the Planning Commission has the stance right now for several years, has really been lacking knowledge of actual zoning law. They come with a limited understanding even at the standards of public meetings. And as the petitioners went through the years, the situation only got worse and worse. It's really unfortunate that the cannabis department at either the state or the county level has never been leaned on for understanding of the legal requirements and the regulations. If the cannabis department would have been leaned on at any of these meetings, it would have helped alleviate the myths, the prejudice, and the stereotypes that were continually brought forward in public meetings. The report from the Redwood Valley Code Enforcement Operation should have never been buried in the consent calendar at the last meeting, because it really shows how much county money is being spent on this bad legislation. We had 800 hours of staff time to eradicate, mitigate 2,000 plants in the Redwood Valley District. That's 2.5 plants per hour. So we have questions and fears that people have brought forward over and over again about their neighbors. Will they be good neighbors? Well, you know, are these neighbors who are growing, are they going to be okay? I'm worried about my neighbors. Well, guess what? The report from Redwood Valley showed, hey, guess what, your neighbors are growing, your neighbors have been growing, and they're everywhere. So it's obvious that if people don't like the smell, well, then, then put it in an ordinance somewhere, because that's never been a requirement of this ordinance ever. It's just simply good enough signatures. So look, we have to grow up, and we have to face the facts. We have legally permitted cannabis farmers in this county that are winning awards at the state fair. The state fair. It's time to put away the myths, the prejudices, and the stereotypes, do sensible legislation, and rescind this god-awful piece of legislation that has been on the books four, five years. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that ends public comment. Any last comments from board members before we have a call for the motion that's on the floor?
Yeah, I'm going to state, I'm voting against it, think it's bad policy. You know, this board thinks that we're regulating the enrichment of uranium or something, it's so far off the chart, where another board will look back and roll their eyes and say, "Look at these folks for four years that screwed up the cannabis program worse than they found it." So I don't think this is good, anything about this is good public policy. I think this board should address the nuisance problem, address odor, whatever we think the concerns are, surgically address it for all, not, not, not put neighbors against neighbors.
Oh, yes, counsel.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I just wanted to see if we get clarification on the motion, because I believe it's, the motion is not to do anything with proposed ordinance, but give direction to staff to come back with different ordinance amendments in the future. Is that correct?
Right, that would be correct with those provisions that I've outlined. Are you clear on those?
For the record, could I get a clear and concise restatement?
Well, the motion would allow for petitioners or the supervisors to bring it forward. It would only allow petitioners or parcels included in opt-out zones, well, who are included in opt-out zones must be able to cultivate. You can't use areas that are not able to cultivate for your petition, you know, that wouldn't be part of the zone. Is that clear?
Deputy County Counsel, that one's clear. In terms of the petitions to supervisors, I think what you're, if I was hearing correctly earlier, essentially you would want to leave in the existing process as it stands, correct? You wanted to leave in the application process, because people...
People could petition, or a supervisor could bring it forward.
Cora, petition is a very interesting word. So we, people can apply for a zoning change under the current code, right? That's what these chapters currently allow. So that petitioning, and even in the context of Supervisor, or Chair McGordy's comment on petitioning the supervisors, there's no formal process for that. That would be, you know, constituents reaching out to their supervisor saying, "We'd like you to sponsor something."
It's kind of like a referendum, that people could bring it forward, or the supervisors could bring it forward.
I would say it's, to be clear, I don't think it's like a referendum. I think there's a current application process, or constituents can go speak to you to say, "We'd like you to sponsor," but there's no process, no signature gathering, that's just constituents coming to you to request it.
So it could be either of those.
So the current system as is, no changes in terms of applications versus the board starting it.
Right.
Okay. Was there a third prong about gerrymandering?
Well, and also that if a person has applied, is in the process of applying, or has a permit, then they would be excluded from any kind of opt-out zone.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, that would be essentially MCA's proposing and stripping out that three-year phase-out period. It would just allow anyone to continue to grow if they already have a permit or had applied for a permit.
Right.
And I think there was a provision that if, if an area had been considered and rejected, it could not come up for reconsideration for another 10 years.
Right. Okay, Supervisor Mulhern?
Thank you. No, I'm not in favor of the proposal, and I would ask that as staff and the board considers this item at a future date, that they really understand the true costs of what is being asked today. I understand that Supervisor Haskett, you recommended that there be a fee. There is a cost to the agency to distract planning and building and county councils' time, working on these CP districts that may not be approved by the majority of the board. So I am, I am and continue to be concerned about the lack of resources within the county, particularly within planning and building and county council's office, but specifically around our inability to move quickly enough to create more housing and more economic development. And, you know, there's nothing to say that somebody couldn't go through this petitioning process and really hinder staff time, even if they do pay for it, that there, there is a loss to the county and the community as a resource for how else our staff could be directed. And it's our job to make sure that we're using our resources in the most economical way, and I don't think that this particular issue is a key priority.
Okay, I think we're ready to call for the vote, everyone's had their comments.
Supervisor Mulhern?
No.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
No.
Supervisor Haskett?
Yes.
Supervisor McGordy?
No.
The motion fails.
I move we approve the staff recommendation with MCA's amendments incorporated.
Second.
Comment from planning and building, and also could John Kudrowski.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, we didn't get a chance to talk about these before, because we were focused on the other motion. I would say that the second proposal by MCA, that in terms of not doing this on ag zoning, does create some problems procedurally with how we got to this meeting. That isn't really procedural nature, that is saying certain, that's getting into a certain zoning type and saying it couldn't happen. I'm not saying the board couldn't give, I might request the board to give direction on that in particular, but I might think that that realistically should, would be a substantive zoning issue that would need review by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so I'm going to revise the motion to the staff recommendation incorporating MCA's feedback in red, except to, and refer to, to the Planning Commission.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, and if we want to do, I can try and get a red line complete and done, so we can refer to an actual document, upload that later today if desired.
I'm comfortable with making the motion now. Does the board need that red line to come back? No. Does the second agree with the amendment?
I agree with the amendment.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Haskett?
Well, I think, again, taking this right of the people away from the people and putting it in the hands of individual supervisors is not the right way to go.
Supervisor Jordy, then Supervisor Williams.
So there's an alternate route. We could still have the petition process that we've talked about, but again, if county supervisors were maybe a little more familiar with land use issues, and I realize there are a gazillion ways for supervisors to be distracted from land use, but as a 14-year member of the city council, where we adopted a new land use code, a new general plan, new coastal plan, downtown streetscape plan, I became very familiar with land use issues. And unfortunately, I do see the job of county supervisor in Mendocino County, at least at this current time, it's really difficult for supervisors to get much familiarity with what land use is all about, the reasons for land use zoning, and how their, how policies are crafted and amended. But I do think that if county supervisors in this county were more familiar with land use, they would win petition, they would be more proactive in intervening. And, and rather than having these proposals, which I think have come forward, where, whether they were for a proposed cannabis cultivation zone, or whether they were for an opt-out, they inevitably weren't perfect proposals. But because the supervisors, for whatever reason, were sort of standoffish from interacting with the applicants, the proposals moved forward in an imperfect way. with the applicants, the proposals moved forward in an imperfect way. In the perfect world, what we would have is, the applicants would move forward, and then the, and the county supervisor from that district would intervene and say, "Well, let's work with county planning staff and let's, let's make a better proposal." But, that didn't happen, and now, now the reaction of this board, which I don't feel like, this board is terribly sure-footed on planning issues, is saying, "Well, I don't know how to intervene, I don't know enough about planning issues, I just don't, but I don't want these, these community members who also don't know much about land use, who aren't land use planners, don't have the money for attorneys and, and, and land use professionals to work for them. I don't want them proposing, but I also don't want to intervene myself." And so, we just want to have a process where county supervisors could propose it, which, for the most part, sounds like there won't be a proposal from county supervisors unless perhaps a political supporter of theirs proposes and requests something. And I would point out that this board is creating uncertainty right now, as we speak, in the Simpson Lane Mitchell Creek neighborhood, because what we've heard from Supervisor Williams is, he doesn't contemplate proposing it a third time in that neighborhood, but let's see what happens when the next supervisor comes in from the fourth district. If they want to propose it, maybe I would support it. We haven't heard Supervisor Mulhern say what her position is. The second time it came up in that neighborhood, she voted on the losing end, four to one, in favor of cult, commercial cannabis in that neighborhood. She did accept a $500 donation from the applicant. And, so, we have not heard a definitive answer from this board, why they won't support, definitively saying that if you get rejected, if your cult, commercial cannabis is rejected in the neighborhood, why, why won't you support a 10-year ban in that neighborhood?
I, I'm just going to object here that I, I agree with you pretty much in everything you said, and that's why I didn't support Supervisor Hashack's motion, because I really think supervisors need to be involved with this. I think neighborhoods need to come to them and say, "This is a problem, help us." And, we should work through the planning process, there should be an organized way, so planning can look at and go, "This is a problem here," because no one can grow, most people can't grow cannabis inside of your, your opt-out zone already, why, but you're trying to poll in people that chase you where it's legal. So, this is an example of where the supervisors can guide the process and make it a good one, so that we don't waste a bunch of time.
So, why can't this board pass a motion that says, if, if, if the issue's been decided, it can't come up for another 10 years?
I can.
Well, so I, I can't. Imagine a CDP in District Four that's denied. Should we say, "It can't come up again?" They can't make changes and try to submit it again for 10 years, they're barred from developing the property? You're talking about good land use, and this board doesn't know land use. You're proposing a process where if, if, if a project fails for 10 years, they can't reapply?
Well, again, if you knew more about land use, you would realize that your analogy isn't applicable.
Why?
Because, because commercial cannabis is not a permitted use. What the, what would be approved through this process is an exception to the process. It's a new commercial activity and an otherwise unallowed activity in that residential zoo.
And the world is changing. I mean, we're looking in the rearview mirror here of prohibition, and it's changing. Federal, the scheduling is about to change. Probably everything we're doing in the state's rules are going to be thrown out, it's going to be regulated as a drug. Where it's cultivated will be different. So, the idea of setting, setting us up 10 years out for policy based on what we know today is just silly. We don't, we don't know what's going to happen federally.
This isn't about prohibition or not. This neighborhood voted, voted over 60% for statewide legalization. They had no idea it was going to be contemplated in their neighborhood.
I hear you, but I'm saying that the whole, this, the, the fear about cannabis is not the odor, it's not the water, it's not traffic, it's, we're afraid of people being on drugs in our neighborhood. Let's, I mean, let's talk, let's get to the heart of the issue. This is America went through a period of prohibition, and we're afraid of people who may, you know, be culturally different, that they use an edible now and then. I, imagine if I were high, I probably wouldn't be irritating my colleagues nearly as much, right? I, I'm not in the business, I don't use cannabis, I just, I'm looking out for property rights. And I think it's weird that we separate one plant that produces THC from everything else. If somebody wants to grow industrial hemp on ag land, that's going to get different treatment than somebody that has a small grow of that same plant that's producing a little bit of THC. It's not the, it's not the smell, right? Because if it were the smell, you wouldn't allow industrial hemp.
I, I kind of feel like we're drifting a little bit here in our discussion, so let's, let's try to, try to get back to, to the show.
Well, I would like to see any motion passed by this board to agree that if it's, if the issue's been decided, it doesn't come back up for 10 years, because otherwise it's creating uncertainty in this county.
Well, it's also taken a lot of time from staff as well, so I, I kind of agree with you that it's with, on that point, it's been decided, so Supervisor Hashack.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, I'm going to vote no on it, but a way forward, if supervisor, Chair McGordy says that, you know, the issue is people petitioning and not going to their supervisors, I think that probably the process should be changed so that, you know, if people go through just a straight petition, they have to go through the supervisor, they have to work with the supervisor through that process, and maybe that gets written into the process of people applying. Because with, like in the case of Rocktree, I wasn't consulted at all during that process, and it would have been very helpful to, to have that dialogue going on. So, you know, an alternative would be go back to that other motion and put in some changes to the process of involving the supervisor.
Call the question.
Okay. Motion on the floor, this has been seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Chair McGordy?
No.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor Hashack?
No.
Supervisor Jordy?
No.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
The motion fails with Supervisor McGordy, Supervisor Hashack, and Supervisor Jordy dissenting.
I'd like to hear Supervisor McGordy just articulate direction for a motion.
So, so what I'd like to see in the motion is that we have the option of, of a petition process or supervisor moving a, an exclusionary zone or, or inclusionary zone. And, I'm sorry, let me start over. Supervisor works with people who petition to, to take a, a position on, on opt-in or opt-out for cannabis growing. Once decided, there should be at least a 10-year period where it can't be considered again.
I'll second the motion.
With that, can we include those two provisions, that people in the opt-out have to be eligible to cultivate? They can't bring RR1s into that vote, and that if you're already in the permitting process, you're excluded from the opt-out.
I'm okay with, with the first addition. Have a little bit of trouble with the second, but-
Okay, well, it's your motion.
Okay. I, I would accept amendment for you have to be in a properly zoned parcel that allows cannabis going to submit a petition.
Chair, I actually don't think you can do the 10 years. I mean, you could put a language in there, I don't think it's enforceable.
It is enforceable, it's just that a future board could reverse, but it is enforceable.
Well, that's, by definition, that's not enforceable. You're not enforcing it on the future board.
Well, it's setting a precedent, and I think it would be pretty obvious if, if something was a little fishy, if the board was ignoring their existing policy.
It would require the future board to reverse that.
Yes.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I think we're just like, talking about a motion here for direction to come back with these changes at a later date, correct?
Yes.
So, we'll work with planning and building, bring back an ordinance amendment at a future date that's consistent with these, and if we have, you know, additional concerns, we'll bring them forward at that time.
All right, so that's, is that a motion?
I agree with the, I agree with the motion and the amendments.
Further discussion?
No, I'm just stating the reason why I'm voting against it. I think it's bad public policy, it's setting us to continue to waste a colossal amount of money.
Okay, call for the question.
Supervisor Mulhern?
No.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
No.
Supervisor Hashack?
Yes.
Supervisor, Chair McGordy?
Yes.
The motion passes with Supervisor Mulhern and Supervisor Williams dissenting.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess at this point, do we move to a closed session? Yes, okay. So, we're, we're going to go to closed session, and let me read what we're going to be working So, we're going to adjoint to a closed session, to hear items 6A, 6B, 6C, and 6D, we will, we convene no later than 3:00 PM.
No.
No sooner than 3:00 PM.
And when you're in baby world, you're, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Back on a closed session temporarily, the, the 3:05, this is a timed item, and agenda item number 5B is an off-agenda item. Discussion and possible action including adoption of resolution suspending auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, Charmise Covison from her position without salary and benefits, and appointment of acting auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector pursuant to government code 27120. So, I need to hear a, a motion to hear an off-agenda item.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Excuse me, Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel. I would recommend that, although we did make the findings earlier today that we go through and, and reiterate the findings that, that are required to add this as an off-agenda item, namely that this is an issue that requires immediate action, and that it came to the attention of the board after the posting of the agenda for this, today's meeting, and have a call of vote on those items, on, on those finding, findings.
Okay, so that's justification for an off-agenda item, and is it so proper for us to take a roll call vote for?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Hashack?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Chair McGordy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so, we'll introduce the item from our counselor, Maureen here, to tell us what's happened and what we're looking at doing here.
Happy to do that. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Maureen Jacob, outside counsel for Mendocino County. I'm the managing partner in the San Francisco office at Liebert Cassidy Whitmore. I'm here with the board this afternoon to address the action to be taken on the suspension of the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, and then the appointment of someone in an acting role. In terms of the background and how we got here, on Friday, October 13th, the district attorney's office filed criminal charges against the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector alleging misappropriation of public funds. Review of that criminal complaint makes it clear that the, the underlying charges against the auditor are based on her work for Mendocino County. Under government code section 27120, this board of supervisors has the authority to suspend the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector during the pendency of the criminal case against her, which at this point in time, as of this afternoon, is still ongoing. So, you have the authority to take that action this afternoon, and then the same statute similarly gives you the authority to appoint someone in an acting position during the pendency of the criminal action against the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector. And I will stop there.
Questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Hashack.
So, if we suspended the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector and put it in an acting, then the person would be acting until this issue were resolved?
Correct. They would be in an acting role unless removed by the county board of supervisors for some reason, or at the time at which the criminal charges currently pending are resolved.
And this could go on for months, or?
Correct. It just depends on what happens in the criminal case, which is run by the DA's office.
Supervisor Williams.
Chair, are you open to a motion?
I am.
I move we suspend the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, and appoint Sarah Pierce as acting auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector.
Sarah, second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further board discussion? Supervisor Hashack.
Well, just if we appoint Sarah Pierce, I guess, in this situation, then is she going to be independent? You know, I'm just looking at process and policy, and, you know, we need to put in the place, good process, not based on personalities or anything. And so, is this person going to be the acting, which is independent of the CEO's office?
That was the understanding by the maker of the motion.
Okay, so it would be, we'd appoint her, she'd be independent acting treasurer, tax, auditor, controller, treasurer.
Well, I, I think she would be as independent as that office always is, irrespective of, of who's seated.
Yeah, she, she is a department head, she's running a department, and we're hoping, of course, for collaboration, but she will be making decisions on how to execute the duties of the job.
Right, we'd certainly want some collaboration.
That's the hope. Any other questions on the board?
Just clarification on the motion. I heard the staff report say that, that the current auditor, treasurer that's being suspended would, could be suspended without pay. Is that, is that the motion?
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
County counsel, would you like it restated?
No, I don't need a restatement, I just would recommend inviting public comment before.
Yes, we're going to. So, is there any public comment in the room?
I feel this board is really jumping the gun. Ms. Covison has not even been arraigned yet. Generally, a felony charge can be dropped to a misdemeanor or whatnot at your first court hearing, which isn't even till October 31st, and it's, it's very obvious that we know why there was a contingency plan for Department of Finance now. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment in the room? Any comments online?
Seeing none.
Yep, okay, let's call for the vote then.
Excuse me, Chair, Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel. I would also ask that the motion consider a, the resolution, an adoption of the resolution that is attached to the item.
Would you like the motion restated?
Yes, please.
The, the motion is to adopt the resolution, suspend the current auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, appoint Sarah Pierce as acting auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, and note that the suspension is without pay.
Okay.
And then, second of the motion confirms he seconds that motion.
Okay, very good. All right, we're ready for a roll call vote.
California where there's rapid adoption of EVs and plug-in hybrids. A plug-in hybrid might only use 25% of the gas of a regular car. And so I, I'd like to suggest that we have an ad hoc of the board bring back some ideas on how to address and, and perhaps lobby at the state level, you know, what is the plan of the state of California to deal with these gas stations as they close, given the fact that we do have, outside of the cities, we have quite a few residents who are on well water. So I'd propose an ad hoc committee just to look at the issue of, of gas station closures and, and how can public policy address that?
Anyone in mind you'd like to have serve on the ad hoc with you?
Well, I know that Supervisor Hachak and I had discussed this topic.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd certainly be willing.
Okay, as, as Chair then, I recommend that we appoint an ad hoc to study gas station closure and underground tanks, and I appoint Supervisors Jody and Housejack to investigate and report back. Comment?
Yeah, just clarification on the scope. Is this to look at gas station closures and clean up during the transition to EVs? Or is it also to look at banning new gas stations? And I, I guess I'm worried about the idea of banning gas stations, given the impact on county council time, the litigation going up against oil and gas, and just how many commitments staff has today.
Yeah, so I think we want to look at the, the broader issue and, and bring back, you know, recommendations that make sense.
I, I guess the reason I ask is because I was asked to get an item on the agenda to ban gas stations, and I said I don't think now is a good time because, you know, we're battling insolvency and we have a lot of other major shifts going. I don't want to put that on county council today. I just don't see the staff time. Not that I'm against the concept, but the timing doesn't seem right.
Concern heard.
Okay. Supervisor Williams, anything to report on? Supervisor Housejack?
Well, yeah, I attended the West Business Development Center graduation for Hispanic businesses. It was very uplifting and great to see so many small businesses getting their go, you know, getting their start. There's been several meetings of the ad hoc dealing with museums and library, and we're looking at different ways of, of maybe restructuring or looking at different models for especially the museum, and also with the library, some staffing. So, so you'll hear more about that later. I appreciate Dr. Miller for giving a presentation at the Willetts Rotary regarding Measure B, and Mary Alice Williford also attending, you know, providing financial backup and expertise on that. And, you know, with the board, we had the Economic Development Standing Committee, we had an ad hoc, now we don't have anything. And so we have an economic development team of three over in the executive office. I think that it would be good for the board to get, like, every other month, updates from what's happening with that, with, with the team. So we, we all know what's going on, where we're going as a county, and we can provide some feedback too.
Sounds like a good idea. Supervisor Mulhern? Okay, I just have a, a small thing to, to share with you. So I was invited to speak to an outside group that came here to UCAU, the California Art and History Society, which spans from Eureka to San Diego, and they had 45 people come. And I, I'm just making a plug for Mendocino as a place to have small meetings for societies and groups like this, because they were absolutely delighted, they really loved their entire time here, they thought it was very interesting. I, I talked, we kind of gave them a brief history of Mendocino County going back from geological times and looking at, at the impact of people on the, the county. And we were at the Todd Grove Room and had a catered meal, and the next day they, they were at the Grace Hudson Museum and really enjoyed that, had multiple speakers, and then they took over a restaurant downtown in the evening. And on Sunday morning, they, they went out to Montgomery Woods, and I learned some history about Montgomery Woods I didn't know, which was that Montgomery Woods was founded by a Latina who had mental health problems. She came from a successful family, her father was a diplomat in Washington and kind of had her managing his holdings, and she ended up kind of having the equivalent of a nervous breakdown. And she discovered, kind of through various therapies, that she really loved the auditors, she joined the CERA club, and started coming up to Mendocino County to see the redwoods, and heard that the Montgomery Woods was basically for sale, that it was going to get cut down. So she worked with Dr. Sproul from UC Berkeley to, to have people purchase a tree. And that's how they, they bought Montgomery Woods. It was really tree by tree by people investing in it. And she went back to, to school at UC Berkeley and became a botany major at age 52 and graduated, and then was one of the most prolific collectors of botanical specimens all over North and South America, adding almost 142,000 plant specimens to the, the herbarium at UC Berkeley. And I, you know, it's a little piece of history we don't hear about that I think is really interesting, and I hope that we can feature that when, when we have our, you know, opportunity for discussions about our state parks and resources. So, anyway, I would like to see more of those kinds of events in, in Mendocino County when we think about tourism. Those are, are really good opportunities for us that really fits the size for our facilities. And I talked a little with Travis Scott about trying to work on, on helping people, and he says they do, when, when they want to set up these kinds of events, because they fit us really well, and we could do things both on the coast and interior to enhance our tourism. And I just have to say that everybody who came complimented me on what an interesting place UCAU was, and how much fun they had coming to visit us. So I just thought I'd give you something positive to think about as we end our day. Okay, so last chance for public comments, and it looks like we have one on Zoom. Anyone in the room? Okay, if not, we'll have Peter McNamee.
I just, I'm calling in on behalf of the Grassroots Institute. We wanted to say that we're very pleased and happy that the Board of Supervisors has appointed an ad hoc committee to look at the gas station infrastructure in the county. And we too share concerns about the ongoing transition of gas infrastructure. As these institutions become less and less profitable, there is a tendency across the nation for the owners of the property to simply declare bankruptcy and walk away and leave the public holding the bag in terms of the toxic chemicals that seep into groundwater and pollute the entire area. They, they are estimated to be about $22 billion worth of brownfield public liability that nationwide exists as a result of gas stations. And so we look forward to working with the Board of Supervisors and the ad hoc committee to come forward with some suggestions on ways that we can make the transition to a zero emissions transportation system that doesn't pollute our, our wonderful county as we go forward.
Hey, thank you, Peter. All right, with that, no other business, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.